Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's July 1st, 2021 Public Meeting. First, Ms. Goster, can you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
He is rejoining now. He's just had a technical problem.
All right, I'll call back. Commissioner May?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
All right. Vice Chair White?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mendelson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Not here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Thank you. And I'll just double-check has Commissioner McMahon rejoined? I see him. Yep. All right, I will take that as an affirmative. I'll also note that Marcela Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Schuyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. Please note that at its executive session held earlier today, the Commission elected me to chair today's executive and open session meetings. And now we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great light of our vicious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the breathing and justice for all.
Thank you. I would also like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public meetings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting Commission business. Votes by Commission will be conducted by roll call. When Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During Commission deliberations, I will use a round-robin format to ask each Commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all Commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Thank you. Agenda item? Yes?
I just, I know you mentioned the COVID, but the situation in Florida is so shocking that I think we should also give some, a moment of thought to the folks there and that they're going through in Florida.
Oh, my goodness. Commissioner Dixon, thank you so much. You are absolutely right. It is a horrific, extraordinary circumstance, and the ability of our first responders to be there and work so diligently to help address the tragedy of these families is really heartbreaking. Thank you. That is so important for us to all recognize. I really appreciate that, especially being a native Floridian, so it's really extraordinary. Agenda item number two, sorry, is the report of the Vice Chair. On June 29th, I had the opportunity to offer welcoming remarks for America's civic stage, a vision to celebrate Pennsylvania Avenue, a presentation and discussion intended to spark fresh ideas for NCPC and other federal and district agencies to consider for the Avenue. The multidisciplinary panelists included Lori Olin, Anita Morrison, Heather Arnold, Helen Marriage, Hani Hassan, and Jeff Tomlin. Their creativity and passion for this work and for this unique public space was truly inspiring, and the questions from the audience were thoughtful and really helped spark great conversation. So if you didn't have the opportunity to watch this event, a video is now available on NCPC's website. I really want to thank the staff, particularly Sarah Ridgely, for pulling together this event. It was just flawless. Thank you. I also wanted to report that Executive Director Acosta and I met with Secretary of the Smithsonian Lonnie Bunch in June to provide an overview of the Commission's activities, including our work to consider potential sites for museums and memorials, as well as other initiatives related to commemoration and telling the nation's story. We also had the opportunity to discuss various Smithsonian projects with Lonnie Bunch, and it was, as always, an inspiring and productive conversation. Agenda item three is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this month's meeting packet, Commissioners received a memo from Secretary Acosta regarding how NCPC will be conducting its public meetings in the near future. With my report, I'll turn it over to Ms. Acosta to provide an overview regarding the Commission's future meetings. Julia?
Yes. Thank you, Director Acosta. Many agencies right now are making plans to have their staff return to offices and to conduct public meetings in person this fall. NCPC is about to start a renovation of its office spaces this fall that includes updates to the Commission chambers. With that in mind, we anticipate that Commission meetings will continue to be conducted online until the renovation is complete in early spring 2022. During this time, we will also research best practices for hybrid meetings once the Commission returns to in-person meetings, which would enable us to incorporate online participation into those in-person meetings. I think we've all had an opportunity to learn a lot, and there will be a lot of interesting advances over the next few months that we can learn from. During that time, I'll report back to the Commission with recommendations on these hybrid meeting models, which may require a variety of things, including some bylaw changes. So that concludes my remarks. And Director Acosta, or I would be happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
Thank you so much, Ms. Acosta. I did want to comment how I'm really so excited about the work you're doing to figure this out. It's not easy. I know in my work here in Houston, we found increased participation in public meetings with being able to go virtual, but with folks who don't have access to the Internet, it can be challenging still. So I love the idea of a hybrid. Particularly, we've learned that for people with disabilities, having the opportunity to remote into a meeting has really helped increase participation, and it saves a lot of time and people's days. There's no substitute for in-person meetings, but I do think giving choices is really important. So I applaud the careful work you're doing to help increase participation in our meetings. So thank you. With that, does the Commission have any questions for Ms. Acosta or Mr. Acosta? Hearing none. Agenda item four is the legislative update. Ms. Schuyler?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairperson. I do have two items I'd like to report today to the Commission. The first is House of Representatives Bill 2365, which is entitled Gold Star Mothers' Family Monument Extension Act. And this bill extends the authority of the Gold Star Mothers' National Monument Foundation to establish a commemorative work honoring Gold Star families until January 2nd, 2027. The second is the HR 4009, the Georgetown Waterfront Enslaved Voyages Memorial Act. This bill was introduced on June 17th by Congresswoman Norton, and it authorizes the establishment of a memorial commemorating the enslaved individuals who disembarked at the Georgetown waterfront after forced migration to the United States by way of the transatlantic slave trade. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for Ms. Schuyler?
I would just like to report that the House yesterday also passed legislation that would remove Confederate statues from Congress itself. So we're really excited about that moving as well.
Thank you so much for that update. That's a really important thing to know. Thank you, Ms. Ginsburg. So Agenda item five is the Consent Calendar. There are three consent calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for approval of comments on the District of Columbia Capitol Improvement Plan, fiscal years 2022 through 2027, submitted by the Mayor of the District of Columbia. The second is for approval of final site development plans for lighting replacement at the United States Air Force Memorial submitted by the United States Department of Defense. The third is for approval of preliminary site development plans for the Temporary Surface Parking Lot 18 at the Bethesda Campus of the National Institutes of Health submitted by the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Are there any questions regarding the consent calendar items? If none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Is there a second?
A second?
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Ms. Acosta, could you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call? Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Yes. The motion was made by Commissioner Dixon and seconded by Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you. The motion is carried. First on the open session is Agenda Item 6A, a Federal Interest Review of the District Elements Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2021. Ms. Acosta?
Thank you, Chairman White. I want to note that I was on detail to the District of Columbia Council to help review the district elements, and as I have throughout this process, I am recusing myself and leaving the meeting for this item. Stephen Stotigl will serve as the Secretary in my absence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Before we hear from Ms. Lynn Shaw, the NCPC staff person presenting this application, I would like to make a few general comments. This application has generated significant public interest, and I would like to applaud those speaking today for their civic interest in this important matter. However, I would also like to advise those speaking today that NCPC's review authority of the district elements of the comprehensive plan is limited by the statutory requirements of the National Capital Planning Act, which is NCPC's enabling legislation. Specifically, NCPC's review and comments must focus on whether a district element in its entirety, or a specific policy or amendment within an element, will have a negative impact on the interest or functions of the federal establishment within the national capital. Ms. Lynn Shaw will expound upon the meaning of the phrase "interest and functions of the federal establishment" in her presentation, which will help provide further context for our authority here at NCPC. So with that, Ms. Lynn Shaw, would you please proceed with the presentation?
Ms. Lynn Shaw, we can see you and hear you. Just want to say, Commissioners Dixon and Mendelson, you may want to turn off your cameras for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. The Council of the District of Columbia has submitted the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2021 to our Commission for a 60-day federal interest review. Please note, the EDR before you today has been revised to include a revised title for the Amendment Act and additional public comments. Today, the Commission is formally reviewing the district's comprehensive plan, and this review, the Commission should focus on whether there are any negative impacts on the federal interests. Pursuant to the National Capital Planning Act, within 60 days after receiving an element or amendment from the Council, the Commission shall certify to the Council whether the element or amendment has a negative impact on the federal interests or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. Later in this presentation, I'll walk through the federal interests and functions that are considered. Next, I'll walk through NCPC's formal review process for amendments to the district's comprehensive plan. As stated earlier, under the Planning Act, within 60 days after receiving an element or amendment from the Council, our Commission shall certify whether there are any negative impacts on the federal interests. In the situation that the Commission finds a negative impact, our Commission shall provide findings and recommendations to the Council. The Council will then have an opportunity to accept the Commission's findings and recommendation by modifying the elements or reject the Commission's findings and recommendations and resubmit another version for our Commission's reconsideration. As a brief reminder, the comprehensive plan for the national capital is comprised of two parts, the federal elements and the district elements. The federal elements prepared by NCPC provide a policy framework for the federal government in managing its operations and activities in the region, and is the decision-making framework for Commission actions on plans and proposals submitted for our Commission's review. The district elements is prepared by D.C. Office of Planning, DCOP, on behalf of the Mayor and adopted by the Council. The district elements address traditional city planning topics, such as land use, housing, and economic development. In early 2016, DCOP launched the Second Amendment Cycle for the 2006 District Elements of the Comprehensive Plan. DCOP amended the district elements in a two-phased approach. As you may remember, the Commission has its formal federal interest review of the framework element in introductory chapter within the district elements back in January of 2020. Since that time, the Mayor submitted the remainder of the proposed amendments on the district elements to the D.C. Council in April 2020. There were extensive comments on the amendments to the district elements at the D.C. Council online public hearings in November 2020. The district council revised and modified the district elements to reflect a variety of issues, including changes to the land use element and additions related to racial equity. I will discuss more of those changes later in this presentation. The Council of the District of Columbia has adopted the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2021 and has formally referred it to NCPC for a 60-day federal interest review. The district elements are organized around three context elements: framework, introduction, and implementation. There are 12 citywide elements and 10 area elements, as you see listed and on the map on the slide. The D.C. Office of Planning updated their district elements with a focus around five major themes: COVID-19 and recovery, equity and racial justice, resilience, housing, and public resources. D.C. Council made key changes to the district elements, from policy changes guiding development in the central core, transit corridors, and various large sites, to significant additions to text, policy, and actions related to racial equity, and additions to the implementation element that provide guidance regarding future planning analysis areas and for the next rewrite of the district elements. NCPC and the District of Columbia have shared interests, such as resiliency, foreign missions, equity, and public resources. NCPC appreciates the updates around these themes and topics as they align with the goals and the federal elements and help advance the stewardship of the nation's capital as one of the world premier capital cities. As stated previously, our role in reviewing amendments to the district elements is limited to making sure that there isn't a negative impact on the interests or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. The federal government interests include those related to Washington as the seat of the federal government. As you may know, the federal government is the largest property owner in the District of Columbia. These federal interests or functions include federal land, buildings, and operations. These broad categories are further defined in the federal elements of the comprehensive plan, which address the federal interests associated with urban design, the federal workplace, foreign missions and international organizations, the federal environment, historic preservation, visitors and commemoration, and parks and open space. The federal interests also include security, which transcends several of the federal elements. NCPC staff has commented on federal interests during the open call period and to the D.C. Council, as seen in attachments with letters to DCOP and D.C. Council. Federal interests also include those related to Washington's role as the nation's capital, including form, character, and experience, particularly within the historic LaFont City. Specific interests include the views and settings of key areas, and streets and avenues that link these national resources. Over the past five years, NCPC staff has worked closely with DCOP staff and D.C. Council to address federal interest concerns in the amendments of the district elements. NCPC looks forward to continued partnerships with the District of Columbia, including new joint initiatives. The following slides highlight some examples of topics that we've worked closely together to address. On July 28th, 2020, NCPC, DCOP, and the Armed Forces Retirement Home entered into a memorandum of understanding outlining the land use review process for the development of an 80-acre parcel at the Armed Forces Retirement Home. With that, NCPC staff supports the revisions to the district's Rock Creek East area element to ensure consistency with the new process outlined in the MOU and the Armed Forces Retirement Home Master Plan Amendment. One of NCPC staff's initial comments on the district elements was to update the Central Employment Area, also known as CEA, to be consistent with the federal elements. NCPC and DCOP worked together in consultation with GSA and the Deputy Mayor for planning and economic development to update the boundary and definition of the CEA to be consistent in both the federal and district elements. In March 2021, our Commission adopted amendments to the CEA and the federal workplace element. The exact same changes to the CEA are reflected in the current review of the district elements. Another comment was to update the future land use map to show all federally-owned properties as federally designated. NCPC staff consulted with GSA regarding federally designated federally-owned properties with an overlay of another type of land use designation. NCPC staff supports the future land use map, classifying sites such as the FBI headquarters as both federal and high-density commercial land uses, as well as the revisions to not list large federal sites as examples for future redevelopment while still federally owned. NCPC staff also commented to update the Northwest Rectangle to be consistent with the 2009 Monumental Core Framework Plan. The complicated network of roads and freeways in the areas around the Kennedy Center physically separates this important destination from the city. NCPC supports the new policy language around improved connections, such as the East Street Corridor to connect the Kennedy Center to the city and the President's Park, and the area between the Kennedy Center and Lincoln Memorial. The District of Columbia has many parks, including triangle parks that highlight the historic character and importance of the LaFont and McMillan plans. NCPC and DCOP worked together in consultation with the National Park Service to revise actions around park land transfers and management, to include bilateral transfers and offer a variety of management options to ensure the parks flourish. It is the Executive's recommendation that the Commission adopts the attached resolution, finding that the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capital District Elements Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2021 will not have a negative impact on the interests or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. It advises that pursuant to the National Capital Planning Act, within 60 days after reviewing an element or amendment from the Council, the Commission shall certify to the Council whether the element or amendment has a negative impact on the federal interests or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. I have explained in further detail in my presentation what the federal interests entail and the recommendations and notes I have discussed throughout my presentation. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. First, I would like to give Commissioner Mendelson and Commissioner Trueblood an opportunity to say a few words about this important work, and then see if there are any questions from the Commission for Ms. Lynn Shaw. So Commissioner Mendelson?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here today both as a member of the Commission and as Chairman of the Council of the District of Columbia. As you know from the presentation we just heard, the comprehensive plan is a combination of the Mayor's proposal, which she made in April 2020, and refined somewhat through subsequent comments by the Mayor or the Office of Planning, and the Council's revisions, which were extensive and on which the Council voted on April 20th, May 4th, and May 18th of this year. Under the Home Rule Act, the Council is required to submit its comprehensive plan legislation to the National Capital Planning Commission for federal interest review. As part of that review, the Commission may require amendments, but the standard is whether the plan, in this case, the amendments adopted by the Council, adversely affect the federal interest. I believe they do not. In our work, the Council's work on the plan, we endeavor to work with the NCPC and to not adversely affect federal interests such as the Armed Forces Retirement Home or other federally-owned properties, to work to not adversely affect urban design, including historic preservation, and federal parks. We also sought to harmonize the designation of the Central Employment Area. In short, we were mindful of the federal interest, and while the Council will always assert the interests of the district, I believe our adoption does not have a negative impact on the interests or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. Technically, what is before us here at this Commission meeting is amendments to the plan, but they are extensive, and they change the thrust of the plan. When the underlying plan was adopted 15 years ago, the district had just emerged from being run by a control board and suffering decades of population decline. Neighborhoods such as Noma and The Wharf were not even a dream, and corridors such as U Street and H Street were still considered vestiges of the 1968 riots. The district was preoccupied with attracting economic development and doing so in a way that did not destabilize existing stable neighborhoods. We've been quite successful, but then our popularity has escalated the cost of land, including housing. We have seen a dramatic shift in demographics. The dearth of affordable housing is considered a crisis. Most residents are concerned about displacement, and we've become sensitized to the legacy of racism that has shaped our city. With this in mind, the amendments were crafted to present a new focus. First, the amendments emphasized the need for housing development. More supply should benefit affordability. Second, the amendments emphasize and prioritize affordable housing, even going so far as to state that where the district is subsidizing the development of housing, it should do so for housing that is affordable for extremely low-income residents. Third, to complement the first two points, numerous changes were made to the future land use map to facilitate substantial development of new housing. Fourth, the amendments recognize displacement as an issue. In terms of public housing, the amendments put forth requirements to prevent permanent displacement when there is redevelopment of public housing sites. In terms of other discretionary development approvals, the amendments require consideration of displacement and the need to minimize it. Fifth, the amendments explicitly acknowledge the effects of historical racism in our city and require the government officials, especially the zoning commission and the Office of Planning, adopt racial equity tools to use as a lens through which to evaluate land use decisions. Finally, let me say this. Our work at the Council benefited immensely from our new Council Office of Racial Equity, or CORE. At markup and then before first and second readings, we made numerous changes to the legislation to better reflect the priority for racial equity. The racial equity impact analysis found that, quote, "these changes do advance racial equity. However, in the aggregate, the plan's sheer size reduces the impact of the committee print's positive changes. CORE anticipates that the committee print is not enough to disrupt the status quo of deep racial inequities in the District of Columbia," unquote. I would agree, not only because the plan is too long, but because it is a plan, it is the implementation that will change the status quo. Before I stop, I want to thank Julia Acosta, not only her knowledge with regard to planning, but her skill in working with Council members to address concerns that they raised. A few of us, I'm looking at Arrington Dixon right now, know what it's like to work with 13 Council members, and Julia brought that skill. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendelson. Any questions for Commissioner Mendelson? Any questions for Commissioner Mendelson? Hearing none. Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you, Chairman White, and thank you, Ms. Lynn Shaw, for the great presentation. And also, I want to thank the many residents, officials, businesses, and stakeholders who have been engaged in this effort, including those who have signed up to testify here today. Their significant involvement continues to be a testament to how important this update is and how this update is a product of unprecedented public engagement and very careful consideration. Ms. Lynn Shaw and Chairman Mendelson shared critical background and content regarding the update with an eye towards the federal interest. So I would like to take an opportunity to provide some additional brief information about the unprecedented process that this document has undergone. As Chairman Mendelson shared, I think someone needs to be muted. As Chairman Mendelson shared, the existing district elements of the Comprehensive Plan were enacted in 2006 and underwent a minor amendment in 2011. This document is over 1,000 pages, and its overall structure were reflected of the challenges and environment of nearly two decades ago. So the effort to update and amend the district elements of the Comprehensive Plan, or what we have been calling the Comp Plan Update, is critically needed to address the current and future challenges we face, most notably around COVID-19 recovery, housing, equity, and resilience. The Comp Plan Update seeks to address these challenges through the lens of the physical space of the district, from housing growth in the context of longstanding systemic racism to immediate public health and public space challenges. It proposes specific actions and policies that can help guide how the district tackles these challenges and more over the coming years. Feedback, engagement, and equity have been important touchstones for Mayor Bowser and the Office of Planning during this process. We have heard from over 10,000 residents and stakeholders in every part of the district, as well as numerous district and federal officials and agencies. It has been reviewed by every level of elected officials, from our advisory neighborhood commission to the council, which approved it unanimously, and the mayor, and is now undergoing its federal interest review at NCPC, and finally congressional layover. To ensure engagement and understanding, OP has provided a wealth of information for those who wanted to spend time on this, whether it's 10 minutes or 10 hours, reviewing the proposal at our website at plandc.dc.guy. We appreciate the effort and insight of everyone who spent time learning and sharing with us to create the best community-informed update possible. I just want to share a few brief highlights of the significant public engagement. In 2016, OP kicked off the amendment cycle by hosting seven town hall meetings across all wards of the district. In 2017, during the official open call for amendments, OP held over 100 community-based office hours across all eight wards. The open call process yielded over 3,000 amendment proposals. OP also incorporated public input from other venues, including feedback provided through DC council's review of the framework element in 2018 and testimony provided at a hearing that lasted until 3:00 AM until a snowy morning in March. I will note that NCPC reviewed that element in January of 2020. In spring of 2019, OP heard from nearly 3,100 residents and stakeholders across all eight wards for a DC Values Campaign, which helped shape the broad contours of our proposed updates and themes. In October of 2019, OP launched the final public review process, along with its Housing Equity Report, that set targets for affordable housing across every neighborhood in the district. Our public review process took several steps to prioritize meaningful participation from residents, including advisory neighborhood commissions. We held trainings for ANC members about the process and timelines. We hosted ANC-specific briefings about key changes and attended numerous ANC meetings. As a result, OP received 34 official ANC riot solutions, representing over 90% of ANC's and ANC's from every ward of the city. In April 2020, Mayor Bowser transmitted the Comp Plan Update proposal to council, which held hearings on November 12th and 13th of last year, providing residents and stakeholders an additional seven months of time to review and provide feedback. This spring, council marked up and unanimously passed the Comp Plan Update, which included additional edits, as the chairman shared, based on feedback in part from the council office on racial equity. It is critical to note that the CORE report did not analyze proposed land use changes, which we believe is one of the most direct and important contributions of this update to addressing the impacts of systemic racism and injustice. In short, while no document will ever garner 100% support in a city as large and diverse as the District of Columbia, I think we would all be hard pressed to find another example of a document that has had this much democratic involvement in its formulation. NCPC has been an important partner throughout this update, and we have worked to ensure alignment with federal elements, including, I have them listed here, but Ms. Lynn Shaw did a great job, so I'm not going to say them all again. And of course, I would be remiss not to mention the critical role. I'll share with the chairman the critical role that Julia Costa has played as a detailee to the DC council in ensuring that the council could properly review and approve the update. So thanks to NCPC for your willingness to allow her to serve the district in a different way, and thank you, Julia. I'd like to end this with a final thanks to Marcel and the NCPC staff for all your collaboration on this document. We look forward to continuing to collaborate to implement its policies and reach its ambitious goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Do the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Lynn Shaw, Commissioner Mendelson, or Commissioner Trueblood?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. First of all, I want to thank everyone for all the hard work that went into preparation of this. As Chairman Mendelson, thank you for your shout-out, but I remember when we did our first comprehensive plan as an elected body, it was in my Committee of Government Operations, and it was a tough job then because the level of cooperation and working together with the federal government and the local was a new thing. And there were a lot of tensions and difficult times sometimes in working through things, but that is not the case now. There is a great deal of cooperation. I also want to make it clear that as a member of the commission, representing the mayor and the city, it is oftentimes difficult to separate our local required, local needs, local wants, from that which we have a job here to do, and that is the federal, federal impact. I know that the commission, I, and others do all we can to make sure that, as much as we can do, we do, but we operate within certain boundaries that have been described already. The one area I would like to sort of raise maybe as a question, and I spoke with the planning director, Mr. Trueblood, and many others about it on occasion. We have a crop, a resource, that needs to be harvested, and the sooner we begin to harvest it, the better it will be for all of us. And that's called sun energy. And I hope that when we move forward with our planning and these projects go forward, we will look for every opportunity to gather, capture that sun with solar as soon as possible, because it's like letting a valuable resource die on the vine, and that resource cuts costs for poor people to pay for electricity. It limits, it has a huge, a large impact on just the environment generally. So I think we need to integrate that very aggressively in our efforts as we move forward to see where we can put solar gathering capacity in our plans at the federal and local level. Because every day we're wasting energy. It's going away. And it shouldn't just make us hot. It should also give us a resource. And thank you very much, Madam Chair and all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Do any other commissioners have questions? At this time, we will have discussion later, but I wanted to make sure everyone's questions were addressed. Hearing none. I want to recognize that there are 15 people signed up to testify. The order of testimony was based upon when people registered to speak. Representatives of organizations will have up to five minutes to speak, and individuals have up to three minutes. Given the number of speakers today, we want to respect everyone's time. Therefore, it is imperative that we ask you to keep to your allotted time, and we'll give you a reminder about that. And when I call your name, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. When you are finished, please mute yourself and turn off your camera. First to speak is Tara Vassefi. Please excuse me if I mispronounced your name. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide this testimony. My name's Tara Vassefi, and I'm one of those lucky people who has found home with a capital H here in DC and specifically in Adams Morgan. And I would like to just give you a little bit of background as to how I understood what the comp plan is and why it's so important. So one of the things that I do in this wonderful city with all the great culture and music and everything that we have here, the bike trails and the hiking trails and all the green spaces, is I volunteer with Adams Morgan Day, which is one of the longest-running street festivals in DC. It's the most joyous day of the year to me. And this past year, since we couldn't do it in person, I had this wonderful opportunity to work with other volunteers on a community archiving project. And I've included here in the chat some of my favorite things from that project. And really what it was, was interviewing and archiving the stories of people who've lived here for decades, since before gentrification changed this city so much and changed this neighborhood so much. And I really wanted to understand, you know, from the business owners who've been here for decades, from our unhoused siblings who live in the streets where they once lived and once went to school. I wanted to understand how this city changed so much, and that's what led me to the comp plan. And the first thing I did was I got in touch with my council member and their legislative assistant. You know, we were able to talk about it, and I asked him, I said, listen, as someone who knows nothing about planning, as someone who knows nothing about the comprehensive plan, this is how I would imagine it works. Basically, a bunch of multidisciplinary team members get together, and they look at the population, the schools, the hospitals, the roads, the public transit system, and they say, okay, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to plan over the next 10 years to be able to have the collective success of the people who make up this city. And I said, to what extent is this process different from what I would imagine? And he said, it doesn't look anything like that because of the same reason that Chairman Mendelson explained, that the original comp plan was based on this framework of economic development back in 2006. And now every amendment and every conversation since then is trying to take that framework and apply it to our current housing crisis, the fact that we have 10,000 empty units in the city, and yet a growing number of unhoused siblings. We have people feeling increasingly that there's housing insecurity. And so basically, you know, that's the state that we're in. And to Chairman Mendelson's point about how, you know, the importance is in the implementation of this plan, not necessarily in the plan, the fact is, is that so many people are already spending so much time and energy just trying to fight against what was established by the Office of Planning and the DC council. The idea of continuing this fight in its implementation over the next 10 years is just
That's three minutes.
impossible. So I would really encourage you all to think about how this does have a negative impact. The fact that we don't actually know what the impact is going to be because we haven't had those impact assessments. There hasn't been any attempt to understand what the impact of this comprehensive plan is going to be on the people who live here. That is, does fall into this federal interest and functions of the negative impact that this is going to have and the equity of the people who live in this city. So I encourage you to send it back and really make sure that we're following the law, that these impact assessments are being carried out.
Thank you, Ms. Vassefi. Are there any questions for Ms. Vassefi? Hearing none. Next, we will go to Beth Wagner. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready. If you will unmute and turn on your camera. Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Hello, thank you. I'm happy to follow that excellent testimony. My name is Beth Wagner. I'm a member of the DC Grassroots Planning Coalition Steering Committee. I'm also a member of the Brooklyn Manor Coalition, and I work as an organizer supporting the vision of the residents of Brooklyn Manor. I wanted to speak directly to the idea that the plan cannot create a meaningful difference. Well, that really depends on what's in the plan. And so what I would say is that we are in the comprehensive plan doubling down on market-based methods of developing housing, despite decades of evidence that what this has done in general has been to displace tens of thousands of Black, Brown, and immigrant people from what was formerly known as Chocolate City. So just a couple of notes. The build more ideology, that if we build more market-rate housing, it's going to create affordability. Well, in the best-case scenarios, the studies have indicated that increasing supply will maybe hold down prices, in the best-case scenario, by roughly 5%. The average rate of rent in market rate DC is $2,000 and $2,078. I guess this is averaging across bedroom size. Holding down prices 5% is going to make that $1,974 a month. I work directly with residents who are fighting displacement in DC in a community called Brooklyn Manor where they are tripling density on the site. So tripling density, we're supposed to believe that this is going to create affordability. The issue with build more housing is that it's a trickle-down approach. So if it works, which it often doesn't, and I would say that members of this commission would be hard pressed to find a neighborhood where rents have gone from unaffordable to affordable based on market rate development. If it works at all, it barely works, and it benefits the people who need it least the most. People who are paying market rent might get a little break, and people who need it most, who can't afford anything close to market rent based on multiples of income, are not being helped at all, to the point of the vacant units. So if we're serious about affordable housing, and when you push build more activists on this, they will eventually admit that this is a Band-Aid. They will. And they don't get pushed on very much. So the inclusiveness of the process is also something to note because the comp plan was never translated, despite being legally required to be translated. And the residents that I work with had never heard of the comp plan at all until I told them about it. So anyway, the project at Brooklyn Manor is tripling density, doubling down on this build more approach. It's significantly reducing affordable housing. It's getting rid of family-sized apartments, three, four, and five bedrooms, which, based on a study by a member of the council, are the most desperately needed housing resources in DC. And there are no protections for the fact that voucher holders are not going to be able to use their housing choice vouchers at the new development because rent is being increased there. There are no protections for people in the surrounding area whose property taxes will go up by virtue of this new development.
That's three minutes.
Okay, one more thing.
Ms. Wagner, I'll give you another minute if you'll wrap up.
Thank you very much. There are no protections for the residents who live in what are called naturally affordable units by virtue of long-term tenancy, which means that people in four bedrooms are paying $1,400 a month, and they can afford that rent because they live in intergenerational families, which are much more stable than households that are not intergenerational because they have multiple sources of income and depend upon large units in order to do this. So if we want to really change the course of these things, at the very least, giving away all of this density by right, can we please recoup some of the costs of this stuff that's being given away for a meaningless change to inclusionary zoning? When assessed, it wasn't even clear that it would be better, and inclusionary zoning itself is not a solution. So what I'm saying is, if we have a different plan that's not just doubling down on market-based interventions, we could actually do something about this. Barring that, no, it's not going to solve the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Are there any questions for Ms. Wagner?
Are other people who are testifying allowed to ask questions?
No, this is really only for the commissioners to ask questions, but thank you for that. Thank you for that question. And please just include anything you want to say in your testimony. Thank you. So next is Shanta Hi, representing High Alert Emergency Preparedness. You will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
Hello. I'm Shante Hi, founder of High Alert Emergency Preparedness, Ohio Prep, and I'm the president of the council at Park Morton. Thank you for the opportunity to address the issues of the comp plan. As a thoroughly-trained certified disaster preparedness pariva and community leader, I'm forced to think about things and issues, disasters, and other things most ordinary people do not think about on a day-to-day basis. As a community leader, I've always assessed the needs of my residents and given the appropriate assistance when needed. Take, for instance, the disaster of 9/11. Our highways were jam-packed with traffic. Metro ceased all bus and rail services, and there was only, there was really no possible way to maneuver around the city. What will happen to our city when the comp plan changes and more congestion is added to our streets, highways, and commuter transit? In 2011, we experienced a 5.8 earthquake down in Mineral, Virginia, that we clearly felt here in the district, in DC. Certified by FEMA on building for earthquakes of tomorrow, I can tell you that today, that many of the high-rise structures of the city would not withstand an earthquake greater than what we experienced that day. Adding more people to the city would only cause greater loss in lives should a severe attack on our city or natural disaster were to strike. As it were, our atmosphere is on track to deteriorate if we do not advance our climate change measures to reduce carbon emissions by 2040. Out is adding more people to our city, going to reduce that when more buses, Ubers, metro access vans, and cars will be driving in our city. Now let's observe the coronavirus pandemic. will be driving in our city. Now, let's observe the coronavirus pandemic of 2020. New York City was the epicenter of the United States, simply because of the amount of density, the tight quarters and shared spaces, the virus was able to spread rapidly throughout the city, even suffering in its wake. I mentioned all of these incidents as a way to bring light in a different aspect to the comp plan, in an emergency situation and/or catastrophic phenomenon, as we as residents would be trapped in the sheer amount of people that are currently occupying this city already. Changing the comp plan would not only, would not only takes away the decisions and voices of the voters who elected you to hear us, you're increasing the likelihood of mass casualties in our city, as well as mass displacement of low-income and or urban communities. Let's be prepared. Send the comp plan back for more extended planning, to be ready, rather than risky. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hi? Thank you, Ms. Hi. Next, we have Victor Booth. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when ready.
Good afternoon, all, and I appreciate you all having me here today. Allow me to speak. Big shout out to Ms. Hi, who just spoke eloquently about the risk of not having a comprehensive assessment done. I'm a native of Washington, Washington DC. I'm a real estate broker in the city. I'm often, I'm always at work trying to find housing for a lot of our folks in the city. It's impossible to find any three affordable housing for our folks in the city. I heard Mendelson talk about some of the things they've done to address the inequities and inequality. But if you have a ward like Ward Eight, and that's the poorest ward, you have failed, and the mayor has failed, to address the poverty and the, and the food deserts and all the other things that we see happening in Ward Eight and Ward Seven. This plan needs to go back for review. We need to know what the risks are to our health, our environment. I used to work with Pepco. I remember when the Dureco hit, I was there when that earthquake Ms. Hi just spoke about. I saw one FEMA jacket in the street. But during the Dureco, I was in the war room, when the CEO of Pepco could not get any resources to restore power to the citizens in this state. All the other districts or areas were, were hammered. But I realize that we're on our own. This city cannot support any calamity. I also want to note that with the improvements in the DC water sewer environment or the infrastructure, when you go to lunch, I used to work with DOT, when you walk out, you smell the sewer. You smell the gases out of the sewer. You, you, you can go downtown on K Street, and you smell it. So, with the dent, with their induced growth of population and bragging about how many cranes are coming out the ground and revenue, it's negatively impacting our health. I also learned yesterday that a DC employee died from the rollout of this EMF. They're putting out a lot of antennas, a lot of 5G base stations. This woman committed suicide because of her sensitivity to the electromagnetic field that they're putting out. If you look at the ads that Verizon put out, they say that 5G is for the greater good. There's been no study on the health impact that those antennas are putting out in the communities. So, I really implore you all to, that is, this National Capitol Planning Commission, to ask the city council and the mayor to provide impact studies for all these infrastructure changes that we're seeing. Black, Brown, Y'all, and White folks need that. There's no wall between the federal government and, and me or the community at large. We are one. We, 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 we love this country. I love this country. But I must say to you, please, send the plan back. Give us an impact. Have them do their homework. They broke the law. They're required to uphold the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Are there any questions for Mr. Booth?
May I say also, there's a gentleman named Mr. Chris that's waiting to be admitted to this meeting. He's in the lobby.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Any questions for Mr. Booth? Hearing none. Next is Christopher Williams, representing Southwest Voice. Mr. Williams, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Williams. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Southwest Voice Community Board against the staff recommendations regarding the DC comprehensive plan. The Southwest Voice is a newspaper and community group that consistently advocates for racial and social justice, particularly for low-income African Americans. My remarks will discuss those issues and others more broadly in the Southwest waterfront area. First, the federal element prioritizes the location of federal workplaces in central employment areas, or CEAs. Southwest contains considerable land areas consisting of CEAs above 395 and Budget Point and on Fourth Street and the Wharf. The comprehensive plan seeks to convert current federal office space in Southwest to mixed use, meaning that the comprehensive plan actually is seeking to reduce federal office space in and around the Capitol and congressional offices. The staff report makes no specific mention of the changes in land use for the NASA offices on East Street, the Ford House Office Building on Third Street, the U.S. International Trade Commission on East Street, and other areas of federal interest in the Southwest Central Employment Area. This is a major omission that points to an inadequate review. Rather, the plan calls for mixed use that will, quote, "identify and will identify appropriate federal employment locations beyond the central employment area." The issue is that the report calls for reducing federal office space, on the one hand, and never evaluates where future space could be. Let us be clear, the size of the blended federal workforce is near an all-time high. If federal workers are to be moved beyond the Southwest CEA, then this is a direct contradiction with the federal element's priorities to: One, locate federal facilities within walking distance of existing or planned fixed route transit services, including metro. Two, locate employees near other federal agencies and departments with which they regularly interact. Three, reserve the most prominent development sites, particularly those with important symbolic visual connections to the U.S. Capitol and other landmarks and downtown Washington for federal workplace. All of these offices in Southwest are near major transportation hubs in and around LeFond Plaza. Finally, the changes in land use for federal properties between Independence Avenue and I-395 are directly related to national interests. Quote, "primary national interests" are defined in this element are the preservation and enhancement of Washington's defining characteristics as a planning city that were established by the LeFond Plan, the McMillan Plan, which is specific to Southwest, and the 1910 Height of Buildings Act, or the HITE Act. The second part of my remarks will address social justice. Until our recent conversation with NCPC staff, they were unaware of the declarations of trust that the federal government, specifically the Department of Housing and Urban Development, has an all-public housing in the district. This trust is a legal instrument that grants HUD a formal interest in public housing properties. While the federal element does not specifically address public housing as a federal interest, it can be reasonably implied. Part of staff review involved evaluating the plan's, quote, "ability of federal agencies to achieve their missions and conduct a variety of operations." We argue that changes in land use for public housing properties constrains HUD's ability to execute its mission and to execute the President's January memorandum on addressing discriminatory housing policies and practices. The density increases on public housing lands in the district affects the market conditions that lead to Black displacement, racial disparate impact, and harden discriminatory policies. We ask for a judgment of adverse impact with respect to the public housing properties containing federal government declarations of trust. We ask that you send the DC comp plan back to the city council and mayor for real planning and impact study, as well as a request for feedback
Five minutes.
from Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, we have Graylin Presberry. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready, Mr. Presberry.
Okay, thank you. Like individual people, our nation has a tendency to avoid that which is unpleasant, not to talk about it, and instead try to uplift that which enhances our image and perception of ourselves. But we know that disease must be attacked head-on and stop, to stop the spread, and thereby kill it. America has a disease, and is reflected in how we treat our poor, how we pick and label winners and losers, and how we covet democracy as if that principle cannot be all-inclusive. No one can deny our nation is divided. But how deep does the divide go? Will it cripple our capacity to respond to national disasters and other threats, foreign or domestic? There's a generation emerging, one that's less tolerant, one that demands more from our leadership. A nation divided cannot stand. Between 2000 and 2010, the District of Columbia lost some 40,000 lower-income African Americans. This is on the back of declines in the 1980s and 90s. Meanwhile, like many other cities, it has seen overall growth. Many Blacks left the city for the suburbs or migrated to other parts of the country because of family ties, increased work opportunities, or a lower cost of living. While many were forced to leave, others chose to leave by, but by, but either way, they were all displaced. Displacement does something to a person, a family. It could have you wondering if you really belong. The comprehensive plan represents important planning decisions that will have lasting impact on the District of Columbia, the greater metropolitan region. The proposed changes to future land use map calls for bigger and taller buildings that will significantly impact central government workforce functions, activities. Yet, there are no related impact studies of the proposed changes to the comp plan and its planning maps. Please send the comp plan amendments back to the city council for an analysis of its potential impacts on the resiliency of the District of Columbia to natural disasters, emergency responses, and other threats, foreign and domestic. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Graylin Presberry? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Next is Reginald Black, representing People for Fairness Coalition. You will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, and we can see you.
All right, thank you. Hello, Commissioners of the National Capitol Planning Commission and interested parties. My name is Reginald Black. I am a native Washingtonian, Ward Four resident, the executive director of the People for Fairness Coalition, as well as a lived experience appointee to the District of Columbia Interagency Council on Homelessness. The People for Fairness Coalition is a group of homeless and formerly homeless men and women who have come together to fight for solutions that will address housing instability in the District of Columbia. Our mission is to end such housing instability through our outreach, advocacy, and peer mentoring. Through our Universal Right to Housing Campaign, we uphold Article 17 of the United Nations General Assembly Resolution 217A 3 of 10, which states in that quote, "Everyone has a right to own property alone or with association of others." In paragraph two, that no one is to be deprived of such ownership. DC is historically an African-American city. The negative impacts of displacement and gentrification are contributing to the loss of this historic population. People for Fairness Coalition feels the comp plan must contain specific, concrete goals to end homelessness and identify clear deadlines for accomplishing the goals. This will include endorsing the Housing Production Trust goal set by Homer DC, targeted for those that are unhoused, calling for 4,000 permanent supportive housing units for the chronically homeless, and an additional 2,000 units for permanent housing for households who experience temporary homelessness or who are at risk of homelessness. We analyze the mayor's housing equity report, which talks about a 12,000-unit, 33% of 36,000 units. This income ban that we specifically work with will actually contribute to a 2,000-unit deficit, and this is spelled out in my testimony. We are also concerned, because there is no practical purpose for up-flumming, other than potentially extinguishing the existing PUD, pud, or plan unit development, to build matter-of-right. This will contribute to advancing harmful development, which will deepen the wealth gap that already exists between Black and White residents. As a concerned resident, I want to point out that, one, the comprehensive plan, including both district and federal elements and amendments, only come before the National Capitol Planning Commission approximately three times every 15 years, and represent significant planning decisions that will affect the, the vision around, in and around the district permanently. Two, the changes to the comp plan now, placed before the commission by the city council, represents more than 1,000 pages of changes to nearly 250 planned policies, and most acutely represents substantial changes to the planning maps that will unlock more than 2 million square feet of developable land and air rights throughout the district. Many of the planning map changes, changes will allow taller and bigger buildings and are in proximity to federal properties, and imminent harm to the central government workforce, activities, and functions. Three, it is undisputed, there is no relevant written planning impact studies accompanying the proposed substantial changes to the comp plan and planning maps. No local officials have sought to ensure the required environmental reporting and impact analysis was complete before approving the plan. And this plan is now before the National Capitol Planning Commission. This is, this also is affirmed by the District of Columbia Office Racial Equity, Office of Racial Equity Report, that is dated April 19, 2021. And this is also in several testimonies as well, the link. With so many residents experiencing housing instability in this region, People for Fairness Coalition recommends that the commission take all of these facts into account. When considering the comprehensive plan update and work to ensure that we begin to unravel the policies and planning that have put us in this dangerous stage of racially inequitable development, we must send this plan back, because we need to be ready, not risky. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, and I will gladly answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Black? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Black. Next testimony is coming from Ryan Cummings. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready. Is Ryan Cummings available to present his testimony? Is Ryan Cummings available to present his testimony? Let me move forward, and we'll come back to see if Mr. Cummings has joined us. Next is, and forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, Nenyaya Amuchi. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please unmute and turn on your camera and begin when you are ready. Perhaps we need to keep moving, and we'll see if Ms. Amuchi joins us. Next is Joanne Boykin Thurston. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please unmute, turn on your camera, and begin when ready. The Joanne Boykin Thurston. Okay, we will keep moving. Next is Chris Otten, representing D.C. for Reasonable Development. Chris Otten, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready, if you would unmute and turn on your camera. Thank you.
I'm actually calling in. This is Chris Otten. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chris Otten. I am a co-facilitator with D.C. for Reasonable Development. We are, as you can hear today, there's a lot of concern about the Comprehensive Plan. This is D.C.'s central planning document. It affects the entire city, including all of D.C.'s properties and the entire area, including the federal properties and environs and interests. This is not a singular project. This is not, you know, one project in one area. This affects the entire city and all of the federal interests within it. The problem here is, there's been no planning studies done, no impact analysis of this significant, as been stated earlier, 200 million square feet unlocked in the land-use plans, planning maps that is now before you. We see in the NCPC report, a lot of language in a matrix. The staff did a lot of good work in suggesting text amendments. What we don't see is any real analysis of what the unlocking of 200 million square feet of developable land and air rights all around the city, including in close proximity to federal properties and federal interests, will do to those federal properties and federal interests. Obviously, when you induce population growth through unlocking developable land, you are increasing pressures on already very fragile infrastructure systems that allow our central government to do its work. We see the water line breaks. We see the sewers are at capacity. We see our transit waves are at capacity. Metro still flooding. There are real issues with the infrastructure that will only become further burdened by population growth that is induced by unstudied unlocking of this land. Now, let me give you one example, and then I'll conclude. We have a significant unlocking of land in the Anacostia floodplains. High-density downtown-sized buildings have been allowed through this Comp Plan change. This is just one example of the unstudied behavior by the local officials that will have a direct impact, because there are no walls between D.C. and the federal interests and properties. Just south of the Anacostia floodplains is our joint base, Anacostia and Bowling. Very, very, very important place. The White House Communications Agency there, U.S. Secret Service is there, our DOD is there. When you allow and unlock the ability for developers to build gigantic buildings, downtown-sized buildings on the Anacostia floodplain, where the water would usually sink into the ground there, you are going to compel that water to other areas nearby, that includes JBAB. That might even include the $500 billion cybersecurity center just a mile away. So when you do these sort of planning decisions, it is required not just by the APA Basic Planning Protocols, American Planning Association, not just by basic common sense, but by the law. You need to understand how those decisions, those land-use decisions, will affect the surrounding environs, in this case, the federal interest environs just nearby. This has not been done. This has not been done. You and CPC Commissioners have the authority, because you have to make the determination whether there will be a negative effect on the federal interests. You cannot make that determination unless there's metrics and data and study of those effects. There is none on this record. We hear, we're hearing this through each testimony. There is no planning being done. It is an embarrassment, and unfortunately, we want to be ready, not risky. We want to be ready. We need our central government to operate efficiently, especially in times of emergency. When it's flooding, it is an emergency. We don't want our central government going down at a time of an emergency. We have very fragile infrastructure now. The induction of population all around the foreign missions, all around the federal corps, all around these important bases, without study is not acceptable. We're asking you to send it back to the city council and mayor to do the required impact studies. It's not just us asking this. The federal elements themselves, as we highlighted in our testimony, there are numerous policies that talk about coordination and data study, and I've listed them.
Five minutes.
UVB 2.4, TC.6, and so on. There's numerous. So let me just conclude. The desire of officials to induce population growth in the capital city, especially in areas around federal properties, will obviously increase congestion, pollution, and impair adjacent federal activities and workforce. Policy choices, including additional population growth, also certainly requires more planning and coordination and funding for reliable infrastructure utilities, transit, and emergency services. We're asking you to demand this happen. As a planning commission, send it back to the city council as you're authorized to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Chris Otten? Hearing none. Next, Katie Whitley, representing the Washington Legal Clinic for the Homeless. Katie Whitley, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Katie Whitley. I'm a rising 3L law student at I.E. Robert H. McKinney School of Law, and I'm a law clerk at the Washington Legal Clinic for the Homeless. The Legal Clinic envisions, and since 1987, has worked towards a just and inclusive community for all residents of the District of Columbia, where housing is a human right and where every individual and family has equal access to the resources they need to thrive. The Council Office of Racial Equity reported that the mayor's submitted environmental assessment is incomplete and non-exhaustive. To pass a large volume of amendments to the Comp Plan and planning maps, a thorough review is needed to ensure that inequities throughout the district are not exacerbated. We ask that the NCPC Commissioners send the Comprehensive Plan update back to the council to do necessary impact studies and mitigation coordination. Without these studies, it is not possible to make an informed decision on the impact of the updates on the federal government. Simply put, the current five-page environmental assessment is grossly inadequate to analyze a project of this scope. Although NCPC does not have a National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, responsibility, the NEPA regulations provide a baseline for the thoroughness needed for actions significantly affecting the quality of the human environment. This updated Comp Plan, a 1,532-page document, which responds to over 3,000 comments, significantly affects the quality of the human environment in the district, and consequently, the federal interests. The NEPA regulations set page limits of 150 pages for environmental impact statements and 300 pages for proposals of unusual scope, such as this updated Comprehensive Plan. In the most recent review, Council on Environmental Quality found that final environmental impact statements averaged 661 pages in length. Other jurisdictions also provide a guide for the thoroughness needed in an impact assessment to adequately evaluate a comprehensive plan. Seattle prepared an environmental impact statement for its Comp Plan update consisting of 992 pages. Atlanta prepared a 252-page health impact assessment. In Oklahoma City, 308. Even smaller jurisdictions prepare detailed impact assessments for their Comp Plans, such as Population 48,000 St. Louis Park, Minnesota's 50-page health impact assessment. NEPA regulations and similar regulations in nearly half of the states detail the required contents of an environmental impact statement. Notably missing from the sparse environmental assessment of the Comp Plan are detailed statements on the adverse environmental effects, which cannot be avoided should the proposal be implemented, alternatives to proposed actions, the relationship between local short-term uses of the human environment and the maintenance and enhancement of long-term productivity, and any irreversible or irretrievable commitments of resources which would be involved in the proposed action should it be implemented. The level of detail required to thoroughly analyze a project of this size is clear, and the current assessment is insufficient. As the Council of Office of Racial Equity's report on the Comp Plan concluded, the mayor's five-page environmental assessment does not provide any thorough assessment, evaluation, analysis of data, project-based assessment, or critical analysis. Without crucial impact studies on such large-volume changes to the district elements and planning maps, the commission cannot come to a well-advised decision that there is no negative impact on the federal interests. More thorough studies must be completed to fully understand the impact on the interests and functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. We ask that the NCPC Commissioners use their authority to send this bill back to council to require essential impact studies.
Thank you. Thank you for your remarks. Are there any questions for Katie Whitley? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next, we have Nick Deladonna. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please unmute, turn on your camera, and begin when you are ready. Thank you.
My name is Nick Deladonna. I can't see myself. All right, let me proceed.
Yeah, we can see you and we can hear you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I am the president of the Dupont East Civic Action Association, and we are dedicated to community engagement. The Comprehensive Plan was passed recently, but it is flawed in its effect on the federal interest, and we ask that it be sent back to the council and the mayor. Let me just hit three points. It is significant that the council's Office of Racial Equity found the Comprehensive Plan to be racist. In the last decade, 40,000 black people were displaced and forced out of the city, partly as a result of the policies expounded in the Comprehensive Plan. And the core tells us that even as amended, these policies will be continued and perpetuated, and something should be done about that, and it ought to be sent back to the council to address the inequity. Second, there has already been discussed the failure of impact studies on the environment, infrastructure, transit, emergency services. These are important, and there's no evidence that the council and the mayor assured themselves that these things were done before passing the Comprehensive Plan. And we can, we should expect that they might. The American Planning Association requires it, and the law requires impact studies. Let me say, number three, that the commission staff reported erroneously that there is no negative effect on federal interests, but we know that the Comprehensive Plan unlocks 200 million square feet of new land and air rights for development. That's going to have an impact. That's going to encourage taller, denser development, that will draw more people into the city, and taxing our environment or infrastructure, the transit capability, and emergency services. So these things need to be addressed, and we ask that the commission send it back to the council and to the mayor for adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Nick Deladonna? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next is Lorenz Wheatley. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please begin when you are ready.
Yes, and good afternoon to all. As a Ward 5 resident for more than 30 years, and a Washington, D.C. resident since 58, 1958, I ask that you intervene on behalf of all residents and other interests of this city. I believe that the Comprehensive Plan, as it now stands, needs to be sent back to the D.C. City Council, as it is flawed with respect to the lack of consideration of the negative impact that the increased density that the plan will allow. Too often, I have seen poor policies and decisions on a more local level being adopted, and then an attempt to mitigate some of the consequences of the flawed outcomes from some of those policy decisions. Decisions, excuse me. I believe that the flaws as a result of the Comp Plan will be exponentially higher, given the scale of this plan. I also believe that there is a lack of adequate agency oversight by the D.C. Council to satisfy the concerns of many residents, particularly the legacy residents of our city who are diminishing through displacement. Most notably, the Comprehensive Plan's traffic and transportation impacts, utility infrastructure, and other environmental factors as a consequence of the projected increased population density are not given enough consideration in legal review by our city's agencies that will ultimately impact on our whole region. As a result, I recommend that the National Capitol Planning Commission demand a more thorough impact study from the Office of Planning under the direction of the D.C. City Council on all aspects of the Comp Plan changes to the legacy decisions and policies, for the sake of safety and well-being of all concerned, residents, regional employees, businesses, and visitors alike. At any rate, more attention should be given to address the needs of existing infrastructure, roads, utilities, dwellings, public spaces, and other building structures before initiating such massive changes that the Comprehensive Plan cites. Again, there's, seems to be a lack of unaccountability, and yet, we have existing infrastructure, as has been stated by some of the other people who have testified, and I concur with them that more needs to be done to address those issues. I've actually heard a utility worker come here for, in my neighborhood, and they're repairing a pipe, a gas pipeline now for the second, third time, and he's saying he's being subcontracted by Washington Gas, because Washington Gas does not want to be held accountable. And yet, they're doing more repair than replace. So that, to me, just shows an inadequacy right there. He didn't want to go on record. I wanted to record it, because I couldn't believe that's what he was telling me. But to me, that's just sort of an example of maybe what's the status quo, and it's keeping a lot of people in business, but it's not keeping us as residents and taxpayers safe and covered, you know.
Three minutes.
Or to, you know, to our safety. So send the plan back, do some real investigating on all the consequences and impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wheatley? Hearing none, thank you so much, Mr. Wheatley. Our next speaker is Vikram Surya Chiravolu, representing Technotherapy Public Benefit Corporation. You will have five minutes to provide your testimony, so please unmute and turn on your camera and begin when you are ready. And I hope I pronounced your name properly.
Thanks, that was a wonderful attempt. Thank you.
I tried.
Appreciate it. So yeah, my name is Vikram Surya Chiravolu. I'm a psychotherapist. I'm a founder and CEO of Technotherapy Public Benefit Corporation. We're a Washington, D.C. B Corp, dedicated to providing universal access to mental health care to the city's residents. I'm testifying today for many reasons. I'm a 15-year district resident. I'm a graduate of UDC, our counseling program. I have watched as land use has impacted my personal I have watched as land use has impacted my personal relations. I'm a longtime member of a community recovery support group that meets on Columbia Road in Adams Morgan every Thursday night. Two of those longtime members no longer live in the district. One died because he did not ever find stable housing after incarceration. Another moved away after many years of stable long-term recovery because he could no longer afford to live in Adams Morgan. As far as the federal government is concerned, I've been a federal employee. I worked at the Peace Corps at Twentieth and L for a number of years. You know, there's many ways to look at your duty in terms of being members of the NCPC and what constitutes federal interests here. I'd ask you to think about last summer and what downtown was like. The Black Lives Matter protests, the boarding up, and the destruction of storefronts, the civil unrest. I'd also ask you to think about January sixth and the storming of the Capitol. These incidents are not isolated. The last time we had civic unrest was also racial in nineteen sixty-eight in Washington DC, and before that, it was the Civil War. So the federal interest in the Capitol having stability politically is intimately tied to racial justice in the city is what I would ask you to consider the possibility of. The plan here does not, the amendments as they're passed and presented to you calls for racial equity impact analyses, but it does not actually implement them in terms of the land use map that's in place. So there have been land use map changes all across the city without regard for racial impact. A specific example from Adams Morgan is just on one side of Columbia Road in Adams Morgan, a three-block stretch. It has been redlined again. There was the north side of the block, which is largely owned by whites, wealthy whites, a number of billionaires, who are largely Trump supporters, have received about four hundred billion dollars in equity out of that hundred million-plus square feet. That's how much approximately in our analysis was given just on that side of the street. All of the business owners on the south side of the street, Latino, Asian, black, nonprofit, didn't get anything. And this land use map change is just one, one that was sort of edged in the very end of the process a few months, actually weeks, before the passage of the bill. And so I just asked Chairman Mendelson and others on the commission here and those looking at, you know, our process of deciding about land use. There is no accident that there's a thirty-year life expectancy discrepancy between Berry Farms and Friendship Heights. We have planned for that. The homeless people that I counsel, they don't have the resources and the choices they should have. And these are strategic choices that are made nowhere more centrally and powerfully than in a document like this one. If there's anywhere we should stop and say, wait a minute, we need to rethink our overall approach to just hand-waving development forward and saying, it's economic development. Well, it's, in my view, diseconomic development. It's actually costing the city hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars to have people incarcerated, to have people homeless, to have people need healthcare services, to have people need foster care services, and the long list of things that racial equity impact analysis would begin to start to address. There's an eighty-one times wealth difference between Upper Northwest and the, actually, the whites in the city, and this is one of the facts from the Core Report, eighty-one times net worth difference between white residents and black residents in the district. This is strategic. This is intentional. We are saying to the people in Potomac and on the Upper East Side of New York that you are more important than the residents of the district, that your wealth and your bank accounts are more important than the stability of our actual country. We are going to persist in racially divisive practices.
Five minutes.
I heard the five minutes.
I'll give you an additional minute to please wrap up. Thank you.
I very much appreciate that. So we're, and just one last note about the federal interest here. There is a twenty-fifteen law that's been relatively undertouted, I'm sorry, ruling by the Supreme Court, Texas v. Inclusive Communities, which specified that the Fair Housing Act that was passed a week after Martin Luther King's assassination in nineteen sixty-eight, it specified that that act is applicable in terms of impact, not just intent. So it's not about whether or not you were racist in deciding whether or not somebody could live in a place. It was about whether or not the impact of your policy, including the DC comp plan, has racially divisive and inequitable impact, which is exactly what the Core Report says, which is exactly what all our common sense says when we look at the numbers here and the realities on the ground. So at some point, we have to say, are we going to hurry up or are we going to slow down? And I would encourage the NCPC to take this moment to say, actually, we need to slow down. We can go back and do our homework and check the impact of each one of these policies and really make sure that people aren't harmed and that we're actually doing good in both the federal interest and the local interest. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, thank you so much for your testimony. I want to go back to three names. First, Ryan Cummins. I want to see if Ryan was able to join the meeting or if we have any written testimony on file that we could share.
Madam Vice Chair, we do not have written testimony.
Okay, so I don't hear anything from Ryan Cummings, so we'll move on to the next. And that is Nanaya Amucci. I believe we do have written testimony, but I wanted to see if Nanaya Amucci was on the line. It doesn't appear so. Mr. Stodigal, I believe we have testimony?
Yes, we do, and I can read it now.
That would be great. Thank you.
The council office on racial equity has reported that despite the changes to the DC comprehensive plan, the policies and amendments thereof will continue to perpetuate racial inequities and exacerbate harm to black communities and vulnerable neighborhoods throughout the district. Unlike local decision-makers, federal agencies have been instrumental in boldly pursuing equality and justice by not accepting half-measures around proven policies and practices that have harmed people and their communities, purposefully or not. The Core Report regarding the DC comprehensive plan makes plain that any language around racial equity, as a lens or otherwise, is meaningless without teeth. Despite the plan's commitment to eliminating racial inequities, the document before us still perpetuates the status quo, Core Report at page twenty-four. If the district's goal is to end racial inequities, Core believes the district should set guidance to prevent and eliminate displacement rather than minimize it, Core Report at page fifteen. How rezoning requests may adversely or positively impact communities of color would be unknown and subject to chance, Core Report at page twenty-two. And there's more. Clearly, the Core Report shows that the elements in the plan now before you do not go far enough and will, in fact, perpetuate racism in DC. We ask that NCPC demand local DC officials take a step further, take a step back, and further readjust the plan to fulfill the important notices in the Core Report and ensure that inclusive and accessible planning coincide with all comp plan elements and map changes. That's the end of the testimony.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to see if Joanne Boykin Thurston has joined us. I don't believe she's on the line. Mr. Stodigal, do we have testimony from Ms. Boykin Thurston?
Yes, we do.
Would you share that, please?
Right now, yeah, well. I live on one of the busiest streets already, which is North Capitol Street Northwest. My mother brought this house in nineteen sixty-eight when I was just old enough for kindergarten. I've watched the traffic build up periodically, and I've also witnessed deaths of pedestrians, neighbors and children, vehicles in my front yard, and me almost too scared to even cross the street to the other side. You're all making the city unsafe for anyone to get around. You're promising growth in neighborhoods in which the infrastructure cannot handle and that causes problems to the longtime residents already here, such as our pipes backing up with sewage from all the other new construction and rats running rapid, the weight of the tractor trailers, industrial trucks, and et cetera. They are also destroying the structural foundations of our homes. It is now about money, greed, and power, and not safety or livelihoods. We are already fighting each other for parking spaces for those of us who cannot afford to rebuild and cement for parking in the rear. In cases of emergency, I have sat and watched gridlocked traffic preventing someone from making it to the hospital on time. That someone was my very own father, who had to lay in my poor mother's arms where he died because the ambulance could not get through rush hour traffic in time due to a shortage of ambulances that have had to come from way across town. So yes, this is a matter that is very sensitive to my heart, my well-being, and my way of life. Because I have to face it, I have to face the minute I walk out my door. It is time for us residents to demand where our tax money goes, a time for to scream like hell about our primary well-beings, a time for us to be heard. You wonder why people are mad, angry? Well, try to understanding how racism and the status quo displacement of blacks may be a factor. The idea of making housing unaffordable for blacks so that you can justify why they have to move out of a neighborhood that they grew up in. Then you build every luxury you know, but in their faces and what they can't afford them. Why? Because you think they are not worthy because of the color of their skin or their ethnic group. The fact that this city is trying to justify why it is becoming so expensive because it is simply trying to push out a race of people to perprove something that was done in the past, which is called discrimination. I'm really tired of people who will not be affected by what will happen in the area where I live that are simply trying to put me and my family in jeopardy. It is time to raise all the hell there is. Thus ends the testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Stodigal. I believe with that, we've completed the public testimony portion of the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I would like to add the following comments. First, I want to commend Mayor Bowser, the DC Office of Planning, and the Council of the District of Columbia for their significant effort in amending the district elements of the comprehensive plan for the national capital. And I really appreciate the collaboration with NCPC staff over the past five years to address federal interest concerns. And I commend you for the establishment of Core to deal with the very important issues of racial equity as we move forward in our work in the capital region. And I'm sure that all of my fellow commissioners will join me in applauding the civic participation of everyone who provided testimony today. I want you all to know we understand your concerns. We appreciate your testimony and your devotion to making your communities a better place and helping grapple with the issues of growth and how we plan in the capital region. However, I do want you to understand that your request for NCPC to reject the district elements before us today is an extraordinary request. And as stated in the presentation, our commission's role is to certify whether an element, policy, or amendment has a negative effect on the federal interest or functions of the federal establishment in the national capital. Many of the issues raised in testimony today should be resolved at the local level. It is not NCPC's role to determine whether the District of Columbia sufficiently completed their environmental analysis or any other required impact analysis for the amendments of the district elements. And it is beyond NCPC's authority through executive orders that many of you addressed in your comments. While federal agencies must comply with executive orders, they do not apply to local government. I should also note the appropriate time for NCPC's participation in the upzoning process is when the zoning commission proposes a map amendment to implement a particular recommendation contained in the district elements. At that point, NCPC can determine what specific federal interest, if any, exists in the area covered by the map amendment and what impact the map amendment may have on them. Many of you address the need for coordination among the federal and local governments. We completely agree. We strongly support cooperative intergovernment planning. And we've been happy to see and participate in joint initiatives like the Monumental Core Streetscape Plan, the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, the Southwest Eco District, and the DC Silver Jackets Flood Risk Management Initiative. With that, I would like to now open up the discussion for the commission. I will start with Commissioner Mendelson and then go in a round-robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on for the discussion, and I will now turn to Commissioner Mendelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate this opportunity because each of the witnesses who testified put a lot of work into articulating their views and their concerns. And so I don't want that to be ignored by us. I do want to say, though, that many of the comments are comments that we heard before the commission, I mean, before the council. Now, we didn't hear much with regard to concerns expressed today about effect on the federal interest, but we did hear many of the other concerns, and I want to speak to them briefly. The, what I came to realize as the comprehensive plan amendments were pending before the council, we had the very lengthy hearings last fall. Additional comments were received in writing. I met with folks. Was that there were several veins of concern that were expressed. And one of them was what I'll characterize as a fear of development or a fear of further development. And if you think about it, many of the comments we've heard this afternoon are consistent with that. What will be the effect? Will there be more displacement? That we need to first do more of an impact analysis. We need to study this more. We need to take more time. And all that correlates with the concern that development will be adverse. Development, per se, will be adverse. Well, that doesn't necessarily follow, but regardless, where the council is, is consistent with where the mayor is, which is that we need more housing in the city, and we will get more housing in the city through development. And the amendments to the plan emphasize residential development. They don't really, the amendments don't really emphasize commercial development. Not much change in that regard, but yes, with regard to residential, there is a housing crisis and a housing affordability crisis. And so people can disagree over this. But where the council landed was that development with regard to housing is a good thing and is our priority right now. And there will be some impact, but with regard to the demand that there be more time taken, send it back to the council, the council should do impact analyses. I think there's a misunderstanding that what is before us is a plan. Now, I'm getting beyond, I'm not speaking to the federal interest. I'm speaking more generally. What is before us is a plan. It's a plan that says, well, we will allow more. We think there could be more development, more density in, let's say, Friendship Heights. And we actually think that if there's more development and density of residential in Friendship Heights, that there'll be an opportunity for some affordable housing. But this is a plan, and the fact that the comprehensive plan map is amended to permit this doesn't mean it will happen. And if it does happen, we don't know at this point how it will happen. Will it be seven-story buildings, where right now there are two- or three-story buildings, let's say, the Metro Garage? Will it be nine- or ten-story buildings? We don't know. So it's a little hard to analyze what the impact will be. In fact, the time and place for that analysis would be before the zoning commission. One of the things we try to do with these comprehensive plan amendments is encourage more discretionary zoning cases, that is, planned unit developments, so that there can be that kind of analysis, that kind of an impact assessment. We don't just simply say there'll be higher density as a matter of right. And in fact, in some instances, there will have to be zoning changes, and there will be impact analyses at that point as well. And this actually speaks to an issue with regard to the racial equity analysis, impact analysis. I think that the racial equity impact analysis didn't recognize as carefully as it could the distinction between a plan, a general plan, such as these comprehensive plan amendments, and something that's more specific, that is, in the implementation stage. Because it is at the implementation stage, if that ever occurs, that there will be a specific proposal, the impact of which can be analyzed. I do want to say one more comment with regard to the racial equity impact analysis. It did not say that the amendments were racist, and it did not say that it would perpetuate racism. In my statement at the beginning, I did quote from the summary, and what I said was, what I quoted was, "These changes do advance racial equity. However, in the aggregate, the plan's sheer size reduces the impact of the committee print's positive changes." Core anticipates that the committee print is not enough- Core anticipates that the committee print is not enough to disrupt the status quo of deep racial inequities in the District of Columbia. Unquote, and as I said before, I would agree, not only because the plan is long, but because it is a plan, it is in the implementation. That we will change the status quo, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendelson. Commissioner Chang. Do you have any comments or questions?
I do not have any comments or questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
No comments or questions, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Sorry to be slow, sorry to be slow there. No, I, I, my only comment is that I am grateful to hear from everyone who spoke to us today and. Of course, to hear from Chairman Mendelson, I know that the effort to get the plan before us was extraordinary. And I am looking forward to having the plan ultimately approved. And through congressional review so that the zoning commission will be able to take it on and. Use it as a tool for future implementation in zoning cases, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood.
I'll just say thanks again to those who testified as well as I think the chairman, as well as you, Chairman White, for just sharing. The additional background and information, I have nothing more to add.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner McMahon. I'll come back to you, Commissioner Argo.
Hi.
I'm not sure you can hear me, if you can't hear me.
Commissioner McMahon, thank you, thanks Commissioner Argo.
I will try and call back in so I can give a comment, I've got a technical problem here, stand by.
We can hear you, you want to try again? Why don't we move on to Commissioner Argo and I'll come back to Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Argo.
Thank you. I was just looking at my notes and I had to at least, we heard from, well, there were 15 people lined up, we didn't hear from all of them. Was taking notes during all of this, appreciate the time and effort that the staff has put in on this, but also. The, you know, the overwhelming interest in the particular issues that were discussed today. As, as a part of the plan and the time that people took to, to address them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon, are you back with us?
I'm back, I apologize. So appreciate all the testimony from the community members and the detailed work on the district's part along with. Obviously, the commission's staff, I have no questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I don't have anything to add. Yeah, I'm just going to leave it alone, thank you, there was, there was a lot of testimony, I was very glad to hear it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
Yes, I first appreciate all the witnesses who testified and thank you very much.
Thank you. I would also like to once again thank everyone who testified and. Really commend you for your engagement in the work to make our community stronger and, and hope that you'll stay engaged in this process as. Commissioner Mendelson pointed out as it moves into implementation as issues come up. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Lynn Shaw for the great presentation. And at this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve comments to the Council of the District of Columbia. On the District Elements Comprehensive Plan Amendment Act of 2020.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Dixon, is there a second?
Hold second, this is Commissioner.
A Commissioner Argo, Mr. Stodigal, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, I have Commissioner Dixon with the motion and Commissioner Argo seconding the motion. Now Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Abstain.
I believe that was Commissioner Chang.
That was Commissioner Ginsburg with an abstention, Commissioner Chang, are you still there?
Yes, I am abstain, thank you.
There are two abstentions and the others are all affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Stodigal, the motion has carried. Thank you for sitting in, Mr. Stodigal, for Ms. Costa as our secretary during that portion of the meeting, appreciate that. Next is item 6B on our agenda. Calling for the approval of preliminary and final building plans for the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency Headquarters Building. And we will be hearing from Mr. Webb, welcome, Mr. Webb.
Hello.
Madam Chair, before we get into the presentation, this is Phil Mendelson. I'm going to step away, I have a budget markup this afternoon. And so my alternate Evan Cash, I think is going to be available, I don't know if he knows that because he's got the budget markup as well. But I'm going to step away, so I'd like to thank all of you, it's good to see you again.
Thank you so much for being here and good luck with your budget markup.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a busy day for you.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair White, can you see my presentation?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay.
And I can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair White and members of the commission. The General Services Administration has submitted for your review preliminary and fighting final building plans for the new. Uh oh, my screen just disappeared, excuse me. Okay. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
That has never happened. So let me begin again, so the General Services Administration has submitted for a review preliminary and final building plans. For the new 600,000 square foot headquarters building for the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA. On the West Campus at St. Elizabeth's Hospital for the Department of Homeland Security. You will recall that the commission provided comments on the concept design back in November of last year. And commented favorably on the design approach. Previously, the commission approved the second amendment to the master plan for St. Elizabeth's West Campus in October of 2020. The new building is the first building submitted for review under the amended master plan and will house CISA. The commission's preliminary and final review focuses on the following. Did the applicant address the comments and recommendations made during concept review? Are there any outstanding issues? As a reminder, the St. Elizabeth's West Campus is located at 2700 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue in Southeast Washington DC. It is situated in the Congress Heights Community in Ward Eight and overlooks Interstate 295. Bowling Air Force Base and the Anacostia River. The site is 176 acres and the entire St. Elizabeth's campus is a national historic landmark. The proposed, the proposed CISA building is sited along the ravine location as had been indicated in the approved master plan amendment. GSA hosted federal agencies and Section 106 consulting parties meetings to discuss the design strategy for the new CISA building. Thus, staff commends GSA for fully engaging partner federal agencies. And the Section 106 consulting parties at the beginning of the design process for the new building and surrounding landscape. Staff notes that the building placement and massing is consistent with the master plan amendment approved by the commission in October 2020. As was discussed during the master plan amendment and concept reviews. The siding of the CISA building will require the demolition of three historic buildings on the plateau as shown here circled in yellow. While the historic smoke stacks and powerhouse buildings as well as Plateau Building 64 located here northeast of the CISA building will be retained. As the new building will house CISA, the design drivers included unifying CISA under one roof. Creating a sense of identity in a modern office environment while allowing for flexibility and inspiring collaboration. Highlighting nature through physical and visual connection and optimizing efficiency in daylight into the majority of spaces. Due to its location on the West Campus, the building sits in a transitional area from the lower campus to the upper plateau. The siding of the building will also address issues with the southern slope of the ravine and provide slope and soil stabilization. The new building will attempt to meet LEED Platinum certification and will incorporate green roofs as shown here on the lower bars of the building. And photo photic cells on the roofs of the upper bars shown here. Therefore, staff commends GSA for the significant sustainability features incorporated into the building design, including a 500 kilowatt photovoltaic system. And series of green roofs. However, staff does request that GSA submit for review a rooftop antenna plan. Once the final requirements for rooftop antenna on the project are finalized with the tenant. In exploring the appropriate scale and mass, the design team looked at the building's height impact on the South Lawn. As well as both internal and external views, particularly impacts to the views of the topographic bowl. Staff supports the simple roof line and the flat penthouse design, which allow the building silhouette to better blend in with the ridge line of the topographic bowl. As shown in this image and rendering, the building is primarily comprised of intersecting and stacked lung barks. Which overlap and shift in the elevation while creating a courtyard space in the middle. The tallest bar of the building to the south is six stories above grade. While the elevation that engages the ravine is nine stories with five stories above grade. This rendering shows the northeast corner of the building and an entrance from the ravine plaza. And another possible entrance at the building's southeast corner would provide access from the plateau area of the campus as shown in this rendering. And here is a rendering from the southwest corner. To address issues with the building's location and solar orientation, the applicant has indicated that the windows on the western ends are recessed further. Than the other elevations and that the exterior fins on the elevations are deeper. The final design includes a covered walkway that connects the CISA building on the northwest corner to the existing parking garage that you can see here. As such, staff supports GSA's preferred massing design for the CISA building as it balances DHS's programmatic needs. For a new headquarters building with historic preservation considerations in the context of a national historic landmark district. In particular, the design retains the panoramic views and porosity of buildings across the lawn towards the river from the administration road buildings. It locates this large new building on the plateau near locations previously approved for new construction. And along the slope of the ravine, allowing for the historic power plant and smoke stacked towers to be retained. And the design approach also helps address issues of slope stability. And finally, it minimizes the impacts of views towards the West Camps, West Campus, particularly on the ridge line. Uh oh, my presentation disappeared again, excuse me, we're having a thunderstorm. And it minimizes the impacts of views towards the West Campus, particularly on the ridge line of the topographic bowl. Now I'll shift the discussion to landscape elements. The design includes proposed landscape treatments for three areas associated with the new CISA building. The ravine plaza, which had been shown during the master plan amendment review. The South Woodland area just south of the CISA building and of course, the internal courtyard in the middle of the building. The final design shows the ravine area to be transformed into a designed plaza with seating and walkways leading to the plateau. The walkways consist of a switchback walkway as well as a more direct stair approach shown here on the south end of the ravine plaza. And here's a rendering showing a seating area along the path. At the concept review, the commission requested that the applicant designed the new walkway within the plaza. To have a more curvilinear form to better relate to the campus's existing walkways and drives. However, GSA is continuing to bring forward the previous switchback design. After their design team studied several curvilinear design options for the pathway. But found it did not meet the slope requirements needed for accessibility as well as had cost issues. In addition, the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Officer supported the use of the switchback path design. As it distinguishes it as a new landscape feature and not a historic one as found on the lawn. Therefore, staff supports the design of the new walkway with the ravine noting, within the ravine noting that the switchback form is appropriate for this new. This new landscape feature as it distinguishes it, distinguishes it from the historic curvilinear design found on the lawn. And responds to accessibility needs and requirements. Next, the final design includes a new landscaped area called the South Woodland, south of the CISA building and north of a future new building. The South Woodland will contain a boardwalk trail, seating areas, bioswells and meadow grasses and perennial plantings. Here is a rendering of the proposed South Woodland Boardwalk Trail. And then the final landscape feature in the plan is the courtyard in the center of the building as shown here. The courtyard will contain seating and a grove of tree plantings. The applicant has indicated that 71 trees will be removed and 510 new trees will be planted. The ravine terraces are comprised of canopy and understory deciduous trees with shade tolerant ground cover and shrubs. And the ravine walk planting will be comprised of native and adaptive meadow grasses and perennials. With canopy trees to the north and south framing the view to the west and the river beyond. For the new South Woodland area, the design team shows plantings consisting of perennial and meadow grasses as well as ground cover plantings. In respect to storm water management, the final design implements different storm strategies for the CISA building and the site. The CISA building is providing an 80,000 gallon rainwater cistern to capture runoff from the upper impervious membrane roofs. As well as any paved surfaces within the interior courtyard space. This treated water will provide the non-potable supply water for the permanent irrigation system within some of the landscaped areas. As well as water for the flush fixtures within the building. Municipal water supply will be provided as a backup during periods of reduced rainfall. The site storm drainage strategy incorporates a series of bio retention and stormwater terraces. To help collect the site rainwater runoff and reduce sheet flow volume of surface rainwater. A large bio retention area is being designed to the south side of the historic powerhouse. To prevent stormwater runoff from infiltrating these historic structures from the plateau and the upper ravine. For the final review, the design team is showing that the material palette for the new building will include stacked stone at the base along the ravine plaza. And terracotta in various textures as shown here and glazing for the upper floors of the building. The plaza and courtyard will contain granite and aggregate while wood decking will be used in the South Woodlands area. The plaza and courtyard will contain granite and aggregate while wood decking will be used in the south woodlands area. While the historic powerhouse buildings will not be rehabilitated as part of the construction of the new CISA building, those buildings as well as the historic smoke stacks will be stabilized during the project. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission approves the preliminary and final building plans for the new cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency building at St. Elizabeth's West Campus. And finds that GSA responded to the commission's comments and requests from the concept review. As I've already covered the rest of the recommendations, I will conclude my presentation. I'll note that Kristi Tunstall-Williams with GSA is here as well as members of the design team from ZGF Architects and Olin Studios to help answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Well, hearing none, I will now open it up for discussion. I will start with Commissioner Wright and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on for the discussion. And with that, Commissioner Wright. I'm sure you have lots to tell us about this.
I don't actually. What I was gonna say before I get knocked out again, um, because it's very ominous out where I live. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the consulting parties and, and this is no schmooze. We've had, um, God, we probably could have had several babies during the time that this building and the master plan that allowed for it, um, took to develop or the amendment rather. Um, I think we ended up having seven consulting parties meetings. And, um, while this St. Elizabeth's has not necessarily gotten any easier over the years, we've all, um, become, I think, more patient. Um, when I started at GSA twelve years ago, I went to my first CP meeting on St. Elizabeth's and there had to be a facilitator there, um, because things were so hot. So this is a, this is a project, um, that has been, uh, replete with moments of high drama, but I think it's all been worth it. I, I, um, I don't usually do this, but I think this building, I'm, I'm proud of this building and our, and our whole team, I think, is really pleased with how it has, um, um, emerged from this process, which is, um, in much like the comp plan, the number of eyes on this building over the last X number of years during design development has been voluminous and I am, I look forward to your comments. And before we go any further, Arrington, I hope you were paying attention to, um, the roof scape. The, um, the other bit I want to make clear too is that the, um, that you'll see it, the CFA also asked for further development of the, um, or for more details about the roof scape, which we are, um, we fully intend to provide. And as far as the antennas are concerned, as you might imagine, um, for the cybersecurity intelligence or what I've CISA, I always, you know, by this time I'm barely verbal, um, they have a lot of requirements. And when we have the entire package finalized, we will, of course, be working with NCPC staff to make sure that it will pass muster, but we are very cognizant of this building's location on the escarpment um, and the views from across the river as well as from Anacostia. So, um, we're very mindful of that. What we need to add that's not very glorious will be, um, as diminutive as we can get it. And with that, I think I'll just let it go and hope for the best.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Um, I am curious how people are responding to the, the buildings that you have restored. I know this has been a, a challenging site. Um, it's a very significant and important site, so. I'd love to hear more about that, but thank you for those thoughtful comments. Commissioner Dixon.
Commissioner Wright, I was listening and I was very pleased. Uh, this building is in a very important part of the city for me and to see him getting some harvesting the grapes so we can make some wine or harvesting the light so we can make some energy makes me very happy. So I hope we just do more of it. I mean, it really is. We got, we got grapes dying on the vine right now. That is energy dying in the sky right now while we wait to put in stuff to capture it. So, uh, thank you very much for, for this and, uh, I'm, I'm all for it. Bye bye.
Thank you. I know Commissioner Mendelson had to step away as Commissioner Cash with us. No, must be tied up with this park up. Uh, Commissioner Chang. Uh, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Sorry, abstain.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Chang. I, my timing is a little too fast for, for this technology.
I'm sorry, uh, my timing's too slow.
We'll figure it out. Uh, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I, I have, I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Uh, yes, so, um, I have some comments. As much as I want to go back and revisit my concerns about this entire project from the very beginning, I've given up on, on, uh, that tactic because there's just no unwinding anything now. I think that at this point, and this is more or less consistent with what I said before about this particular project, is that it's as good uh, as it can be, and it is a fine building. I think that the, the issues that we have with the park service have to do with the, the site as a national historic landmark. And, you know, we have provided some more specific comments about this with our concerns and some of the concerns have been addressed, but not all. And I think that the, at this point, the only thing that really remains a concern because we know that, you know, this, this is, I think the ship has sailed. This is, this building will be built as it's, um, been designed. Has to do with, uh, the rehabilitation of the remaining historic buildings on the campus. That was supposed to be a priority going all the way back to the two thousand and eight programmatic agreement. And we're very concerned about, uh, the commitment of DHS in particular to pursuing adaptive reuse in the deteriorating buildings, historic buildings. Cause it's, you know, this is what we fear the most is that this is just, um, the first one, right? We've gone through multiple campus, campus plan amendments. Uh, and, you know, we are tearing down buildings that were supposed to be preserved in the original plan. And, uh, as far as we know, there are not any immediate plans to move ahead with the restoration of or rehabilitation of other historic buildings, um, in the, on the campus. And that, you know, that's the commitment that we really need. And I hope that in the future NCPC, um, takes a hard line about insisting that DHS prioritize the rehabilitation of those, uh, historic buildings. I will also say one other thing. I was, I was initially quite confused by, uh, Commissioner Wright's comment about, you know, the, all of these meetings being enough time to have a baby and then saying that she had seven or that they had seven. I got confused by that. Then I realized.
Seven meetings, seven meetings. Come on now.
Not seven babies.
Well, I can't speak for all the consulting parties, Mr. May. I know that I did not have a baby in the last seven meetings.
I know. Anyway, I couldn't let that pass. What can I say?
Of course not.
Of course not. But, uh, thank you very much for the thorough presentation and for NCP's attention, uh, NCPC's attention to this. And again, I really hope that, uh, DHS takes seriously their obligation to, uh, rehabilitate, um, the historic buildings uh, and that NCPC, um, holds their feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May, and thank you for, for clarifying the baby's question. It was helpful. Commissioner Trueblood.
Uh, thanks. Uh, I'll just say, you know, I, this is obviously a critically, uh, important agency and we're excited to see it happening at St. Elizabeth's West, uh, you know, uh, even though I realize all of the challenges that have been faced, whether it's about the natural terrain, the historic elements, the budgeting, uh, so I, I recognize how challenging it's been. So I'm excited to see this. Uh, I think they did a great, the team's done a great job of responding to our comments. Uh, I like the mix of architecture with the historic, uh, architecture and the more modern approach. I think it gives contact, it gives, um, it gives a little more texture to, to the campus, uh, but I will, uh, so, so I, 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 that's all good. I, I will agree with Commissioner May about importance of preserving historic, uh, buildings. It would be good, uh, if we can't get kind of an answer about the plan now, uh, to, 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 to make sure that next time this comes before us, we have a little clearer view towards the preservation and reuse of those elements. I think we all know that, um, you know, nearly stabilizing a building can oftentimes not be enough to prevent it from deteriorating and adaptive reuse, and reusing it can. Uh, and so to me, there is a difference between those two, and I would love to, you know, make sure that that, that those, that those historic resources are preserved.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I don't really think I have much more to add from the comments I haven't made by the rest of the commission. So I just, uh, it's a fine looking building. It's a lot of hard work on GSA's part to bring that vision there. And, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Um, yes, just, um, I appreciate, I, I'm taken back to when I was with the administration and how many times one of my dearest friends was the head of, um, the, of St. Elizabeth, at St. Elizabeth's at that time, and how many times we trooped up there and through, um, the property, uh, looking at, and that was a long time ago, looking at ways that we could deal with some of the historic properties. So, so happy, um, to see that there's, you know, that, that we have movement here. The responsiveness of, um, uh, the design to the concept review. Um, I'm happy to see that and I'm just really glad this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. And I see Commissioner Wright. You have additional comments?
Yes, um, I can just lay out in broad terms. Um, we were tasked with, by our authorizers to, um, first focus on, um, one point two million square feet on the plateau, which will be CISA. And, um, building three that you saw in the master plan, um, has been bumped in the queue. We will do another smaller building for funding reasons. That, that will go next to the coast guard, then return to the plateau. That will be, in broad strokes, the plan is having, um, having accomplished, uh, a critical mass on the campus for DHS's consolidation plans. We can then turn, return to the historic buildings after that. That is the plan at the moment. Just to address some of the concerns which I share about the historic buildings. Likely turning to, um, um, or I, I think we hope to the admin row buildings, which will be facing the, um, the two new buildings on the plateau. Uh, again, things change as we've seen already in the, in the, um, thirteen years since the original master plan was, um, approved. So, um, I, it is my fervent hope that we can adhere to that plan, but as everyone, I think by now understands, it's a matter of funding.
That's really helpful to have that context and be reminded of when that plan was first done. Thank you. Um, with no further discussion, is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final building plans?
Well, shoot, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Uh, Ms. Costa, welcome back. Can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by rules call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Wright and seconded by Commissioner Argo. And with that, Commissioner Trueblood.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McMahon.
Um, geez, it just happened. Uh, yes.
All right. Uh, Commissioner May.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner.
Yes.
There we go. Good. Uh, I believe Commissioner Cash is not, uh, here. Uh, Commissioner Chang.
Abstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Next is agenda item six C, approval of comments on concept plans for the South Mall Campus Historic Core Revitalization. And we have Mr. Fliss, um, to present. Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Um, so, good afternoon, members of the commission. Um, the Smithsonian Institution has submitted concept plans for the project that they're calling the Revitalization of the Historic Core or the Rock. Um, this includes improvements to the Smithsonian Castle, uh, the Arts and Industries Building, a new cooling plant, a central utility plant and cooling towers, as well as various other improvements across the South Mall Campus. Next slide. Actually. Um, so I thought this is a concept review. So, um, just for, by way of background, the, the focus of today's, um, discussion is, you know, really focused on the appropriateness of the project for the site. Are there any particularly unique or complex issues? Understanding any particular, um, alternatives or options in project components as well as are there any stakeholders or other parties that should be involved, um, as the project moves forward? Uh, next. So I think everybody's familiar with the South Mall Campus. Uh, this is a, a map just for reference showing the project area, which is highlighted in blue, um, as well as the South Mall Campus area, which is highlighted in yellow. So just for reference, Independence Avenue is on the south. And then the central part of the National Mall, the, the lawn is on the north side. So on the next slide, you'll see, um, an aerial image of, of the, the, this part of the campus showing, uh, the Arts and Industries Building in the middle, uh, the castle in the background as well as the hopped garden. Uh, both of these buildings are national historic landmarks. Um, and for, for this reason, one, one of the things that we've highlighted staff as, as one of the most significant challenges, challenges about this project is really the potential for cumulative impacts to both, uh, national landmarks due to the number and extent to the proposed alterations. And as we walk through the project, you'll see some of those proposed components. Um, again, this project is still at the conceptual stage and further studies will be necessary. Um, and in addition, uh, you know, additional coordination will be required. And in particular, we've highlighted in the recommendation that ongoing work with the DC State Historic Preservation Office as well as the National Park Service should continue to first avoid adverse impacts and then to, to minimize them where possible. So. So on the next slide, um, the major project components again include the, um, the castle and Arts and Industries Building as well as the new central utility plant. And these major components generally align with the framework, uh, which was set forth in the South Mall Campus Master Plan, which the commission approved back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, although some of the details and extensive have changed as the project design has, has moved forward. Some other project components, which I'll walk through later in the discussion are new perimeter security, security as, as well as cooling towers, which would, are proposed to be located at the Natural History Museum. Again, all of these were identified in the South Mall Campus Master Plan. Next slide. So in addition to revitalizing these two national historic landmarks, one of the major project goals is to increase public access and use. Here you can see, for example, both the castle, which is SIB, as well as AIB, the proposals to increase that public access. Uh, for example, the castle would go from seventeen percent public to, um, sixty one percent. And overall staff, uh, expresses support for these goals. Next. So, uh, with that overview, I think it's also important to note what's not included in this project, specifically the new entry pavilions and the hopped garden redesign, which was proposed as part of the master plan. Uh, those elements are not a part of this undertaking. And we understand that the, that some of these other components, uh, like the pavilions are, um, being reconsidered by the Smithsonian, uh, institution. And, and while it, uh, does not directly impact our review of the rock at this point, it would be helpful to understand if there are future, um, considerations or future changes to the master plan area and, um, and to potentially. and, um, and to potentially update the master plan, uh, to reflect those, uh, moving forward. So, uh, staff would, 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 would work with Smithsonian to understand what those changes might be. Next slide. Okay, so this is a large project with a lot of components. I'm going to try to walk through them relatively quickly at a high level and then just focus on those areas where staff had recommendations, um, which are outlined in the EDR. I'm going to first start by talking about the castle, move to the Arts and Industries Building, uh, talk about the central utility plant and the cooling towers, which are a component. And then I'll wrap up focusing on the gardens and perimeter security. Um, so first starting with the castle, um, and with both the castle and AIB, the project effort really focuses on improvements to the envelope, uh, building systems, access, and then some of the structural systems. And again, these are the big focus areas. Next slide. So just for background, the castle was designed by James Renwick and was completed in 1855. And the last major revitalization of the castle was completed in 1968. Next slide. Given this, the primary program goals of the castle revitalization include increased public access, uh, to the significant historic spaces, activating the basement level with public functions and providing an enhanced visitor center on the first and, uh, first floor, as well as the basement. The Smithsonian, uh, administration offices will remain housed on the, in the east and, uh, east wing and the range of the castle. Um, those are highlighted in the blue areas, kind of on the right side of the diagram. Um, and that's, that's where they've historically been located. Overall, staff supports increasing public access and restoration of the important interior spaces to the historic condition. Um, the castle again will be revitalized, uh, as the primary visitor center for the Smithsonian. And staff believes this is an appropriate location to introduce visitors to the Smithsonian museums on the National Mall. So next slide, uh, just here are a few images showing, uh, the proposed improvements. Uh, here's a basement level. The next slide shows, uh, the great hall. Next image. Then you'll see the, um, the restoration, the next image of the commons. Again, all of these are going to be restored with public use and public access. So next slide. So as part of the revitalization, again, there's these big buckets of improvements. The first is the building envelope. Um, here you can see part of the project includes restoring or replacing the building masonry and making, uh, envelope improvements. Next slide. Uh, repairs and replacement of the roof and roofing where necessary. Next slide. And then replacement of windows where, where necessary. Um, according to the applicant, most of the windows were installed in the 1980s and 1990s. Um, however, some critical historical windows would also be retained. Next slide. So for mechanical systems, uh, again, the intention here is to bring the building back or bring the building to a point where it can, you know, accommodate contemporary systems and support those public uses. And so the project includes new intake and exhaust points, uh, taking advantage of the rooftop, uh, rooftop locations where, where possible. Um, and then moving next, I'm going to talk about the east end of the castle, um, including that east wing and range as we talk about some of the access improvements. So next slide. So here we are zoomed in on the east end of the castle. Again, this is called the, the east wing, which is the blue area highlighted in blue, and then the range is the gray area just to the left. Um, the applicant is proposing to add a new hallway connector here, um, at the fourth level, uh, to the east range. Currently, this part of the building does not meet code requirements for egress. Uh, two points of, two points of egress required. However, at this point, there's only an interior stair, um, and otherwise staff has to exit onto the roof, uh, to, to, to exit this part of the building in terms of an emergency. So the applicant is looking at adding this new connector, which is circled in red, um, to create a more, uh, to create a code compliant exit to address this issue. Next. And so here you can see, um, on the left, the existing condition, there's an existing roof monitor, which is a small element on the roof. And then the right side, you can see the proposed connector. Uh, again, this new hallway would require the removal of the existing roof monitor, and the new connector would be taller than the existing monitor to accommodate that pedestrian movement. At this point, the design includes, um, includes, uh, glass connectors on both sides to help highlight the, this, uh, to help frame, uh, the specific element. So on this image, you can see just an elevation view. Um, overall staff and on the left, you can see existing. On the right side, you can see the proposed. So there is a change in the, the roof line here. Overall, staff understands the, the need for, uh, egress from, from the east, uh, east wing of the castle. However, this new addition, uh, is a substantial alteration, and we do find that the proposed fourth level connector does have the potential to cause it physical and visual, visual adverse effects to the castle. And to better understand these impacts, we do recommend that the applicant provide several views and renderings, uh, of the castle, both from the National Mall, uh, as well as from Independence Avenue, to really understand, uh, those visual impacts of any proposed addition. Next slide. So other access improvements, just, uh, moving on, include new doors at the basement level. Again, these are to accommodate, uh, increased public use, uh, and egress. Next slide. And so moving on to some of the larger, um, larger changes and, and some structural elements. These include, just highlighted here, some new area ways around the base of the building. These are to help regularize the footprint, um, but also to provide some, some light into those new basement level spaces. Next slide. And then, uh, this also includes, uh, new seismic protection in the form of, uh, base isolation, which was again identified in the master plan. This approach basically disconnects the building from the ground plane to help protect it in the case of, of, of an earthquake or other ground movement. This is, uh, a proposed because it requires less structural, um, intervention above grade in some of those important historic spaces, um, but does require excavation under the castle to incorporate those systems. So again, this does require, um, further study and analysis, and we'll see that as the, as the project is further developed. Next slide. So the project also include, as I mentioned, includes the lowering, uh, of the basement to accommodate that visitor use, um, as well as excavation for seismic improvements. Um, this is also, uh, accommodating new mechanical systems in a B1 level, which is, uh, shown on the very far right at the bottom. Um, this, uh, B1 level would not include any habitable spaces, but it would include, uh, mechanical spaces. Again, the intention is to move those systems out of the building, um, and accommodate them in a, in an area that would not i- impact the historic, historic fabric. Um, to the right of that, uh, the, the project also includes a new expanded loading dock, uh, connector space. These would connect the quadrangle castle and Arts and Industries Building, again, to keep them out of the historic spaces. Next slide. So here you can see, um, this is a plan view. The, the castle is highlighted here in purple, the basement level. The blue areas are that new, um, underground loading facility and support spaces. Overall, staff understands the purpose of this new, uh, below grade expansion. Um, and we note that the amount of the proposed expansion, uh, excavation has not been fully determined. Um, you know, additional work and studies will, will continued. But I will note that the reduction of excavation is identified as a minimization measure in the programmatic agreement. Uh, that was prepared subject to the South Mall Campus Master Plan. Um, and so that we, so we do recommend that the applicant continue to refine the proposal to better describe the scope of the need, and if possible, to reduce the amount of excavation consistent with the, with the PA. So moving on to the next slide, um, I'm going to walk through Arts and Industries Building. Um, next slide. So I think everybody's familiar with this, uh, designed by Adolf Kluus and Paul Schultz and, uh, built between 1879 and 1881. Uh, as I mentioned, like the castle, it's a national historic landmark. Um, the last revitalization, um, was completed in 2014. This included some structural enhancements, as well as replacement of the roof and windows and some restoration to the masonry exterior. Next slide. So like the castle, the improvements here are primarily focused on increasing the public use and access to the building, uh, while respecting its historic character. Um, like the castle project, this also includes proposal for some basement level excavation. This is, uh, highlighted in blue, the very bottom diagram. Um, this will provide again, house, uh, space for back of house uses, as well as mechanical systems. Again, the intention is to move it out of the, you know, really important historic spaces, which are, which are, uh, above grade. Next slide. So like the castle, this is, uh, this project includes, uh, other mechanical upgrades, um, new ventilation for mechanical systems, uh, with the intention to use some of the existing, uh, openings and louvers in a way that would be sensitive to the building. Next slide. And likewise, also adding new area ways, this would allow for air intake and exhaust around the building. Next slide. And then also, uh, moving on to egress and access, uh, like the castle with increased public use, um, there's a need for new egress to meet code requirements. Um, so you can see here, highlighted in blue on the left, the intention to create new, um, doorways, new access points in areas that can best align or, um, kind of, uh, sympa- sympathetically, uh, aligned with the historic fabric. Next slide. Um, again, same, same vein, new exit doors to, to accommodate that increased public use. Uh, here just highlighted a point where, uh, an existing window, window would be lowered, uh, to allow for egress. Um, and again, in a way that meets code, but is sympathetic to the, to the historic building. Next. So here are just a few images of, uh, the proposed design intent. This is, uh, a, a view of the North Hall. And then here's a, an exhibition space on the first floor. Um, so overall, staff understands the proposed improvements. Um, for, for us, the biggest area of question really remains the amount of below grade excavation, which is proposed. Um, and we do request additional information about that scope, um, as it's further developed and as it's, as it's better down. So. So moving on to the central utility plant, again, this is a project that was identified in the master plan. Uh, it's located below grade between the quadrangle and AIB. And the next slide, you can see that. Um, it's highlighted here in purple. Uh, again, the purpose of this is to create a plant that would serve the South Mall Campus and allow for, uh, these buildings to be disconnected from the GSA system, uh, which according to Smithsonian will result in cost savings, as well as reduction carbon footprint. Um, overall, staff supports system improvements that will just decrease energy consumption, uh, increase efficiency, and also reduce that carbon footprint. Um, but it would be helpful to have further details about how that, how the proposed central utility plant will achieve these sustainability goals i- in the long run. So next slide. Um, here's just a few plans. Uh, this is a two-level, uh, below grade, uh, space. This is the B2 level. And then on the next slide, uh, you can see, um, there's actually a third level, which is, uh, proposed to be for stormwater management. This is identified as a cistern. Um, overall, staff supports, uh, you know, a comprehensive approach to stormwater management. Uh, we do request that the applicant coordinate with the District Department of Energy and Environment in developing the stormwater management strategy. Next. So in terms of staff comments on the central utility plant, um, I think here our primary question is what the visual impacts will be after, uh, the excavation is completed and the, the gardens are put back. What the design, what the garden design will look back and what are the, what are the components of the plant that might impact that? So we do request that they clarify whether there's going to be sufficient soil depth above the central utility plant to accommodate trees and other plantings, um, as well as any information about other vertical elements like stairs or vents. Um, if, if applicable, that might impact that, the, the visual, uh, character of that space above, above the plant, uh, and potentially impact the garden design. So moving now on now to the cooling towers, these are required as part of the central utility plant, um, as, essentially industrial equipment to, um, you know, uh, exchange heat with the atmosphere. The applicant is exploring the size and footprint of these features, but the, uh, based on their analysis at this point, they are, can be significantly large, um, up to 166 feet by, um, 50 feet, um, which does have implications about where you can put it. Next slide. So the design team has looked at, uh, a couple of options of where to locate these cooling towers. Um, here you can see highlighted in, in, uh, red, a location between the Hirshhorn Museum and Arts and Industries Building. Um, you know, looking at this, it potentially would, um, impact both of those buildings, as well as the existing Ripley Garden. Um, it would also potentially impact that, uh, you know, bicycle and pedestrian access that occurs through there today. Um, and so as a result of that, on the next slide, you'll see the applicant has identified a preferred location actually located across the mall at the Natural History Museum, um, highlighted here in yellow. This is on the west side of the site. It's an existing parking area that's actually located below grade. Um, this site actually mirrors an existing cooling tower, which is on the, on the east side of the camp, uh, of this property, uh, which is highlighted in white on the right side. So given this location, I think the question here for staff is what are the visual impacts of this installation going to be? Uh, and it would be helpful, and this is included in our recommendation, that views and renderings be provided, you know, from critical locations, particularly on the National Mall, um, to understand those impacts, both to the mall, uh, view, views and setting, as well as to the Natural History Museum. So on the next slide, you'll see, uh, one of the issues with locating the cooling towers on this side of the National Mall is that they need to be connected below grade by, uh, essentially pipes and other infrastructure. Um, the applicant is, is exploring two options for that connection. One is in yellow, which is an existing, uh, existing pipe, uh, or existing tunnel connection. Um, the other would be a new tunnel board directly across, uh, underneath the mall, which is highlighted in yellow. Um, and so given the potential for, uh, impacts to below grade infrastructure, uh, potentially archaeology, uh, we do request, and because this is in park service jurisdiction, we do recommend that the applicant coordinate with the National Park Service regarding any below grade construction for, for this connection. And in either case, next slide. Okay, so moving on to the last series of project elements, these are mostly focused on the landscape in the areas around the building, including the gardens and perimeter security. It's interesting to point out that the landscape of the nation, of the South Mall campuses has changed a lot over time. Although the castle and AIB are both individually designated, um, the gardens are not designated, since they don't fall within the period of significance for their respective buildings. Um, the gardens are documented as part of the landscape buildings, uh, landscape setting of these buildings, um, but they're not, uh, counted as contributing resources. That said, I think from staff's perspective, the gardens really do, do set a, a little bit of a stage for our experience and, and those of, of visitors who are visiting, uh, who are, you know, coming to the South Mall Campus. Next slide. So the applicant's basic goal for, for this project, uh, this component of the project is to replace the existing vegetation in the spirit of the existing character while accommodating all these new below grade improvements, which I've already kind of walked through. So on the next slide, you'll see, um, all of these components highlighted in various colors. Again, these include the area ways, um, the excavation for the central utility plant. You know, these are, these are the things that will have, uh, at least a temporary impact on the garden. But the intention for this project is to, uh, restore them relatively similar to the character that, that exists today. Next slide. So in terms of, um, you know, this component of the project, uh, we understand that additional details will be determined as the design further develops. Uh, we do recommend additional exploration of a few areas, uh, for, for consideration, um, including evaluating opportunities to save, restore and replant trees if they're, you know, if they can be during construction, ensuring that the gardens will accommodate a variety of native plants and support pollinator health. And then of course, ensuring that the garden will prevent and, uh, garden design will prevent a net loss of tree canopy, uh, consistent with a comprehensive plan. Next slide. So the final major product component includes the addition of perimeter security to areas around the castle and AIB. Um, perimeter security has been contemplated for this site, uh, going back as far as 2004 with the, the mall, mall-like, uh, concept design, um, which was, uh, yeah, in, in 2004. The South Mall Campus Master Plan also identified perimeter security as a project. Um, the proposal does include a variety of perimeter security measures, um, not fully detailed at this point, but you can see highlighted in red, the general extent of where those measures might go. Um, they could include ballards, low walls and other features. Next slide. So the campus i- in staff's mind should, in, in perspective, should remain as visually open and inviting as possible for visitors. This is particularly important for the areas around the, the, the entrance of the castle and Jefferson Drive. And I'll point out that unlike many other museums on the National Mall, the castle and AIB don't have those large building setbacks, uh, or yards where, where printer security can be integrated. Um, we do find that the building placements, in, in this case, both AIB and the castle, uh, as well as the proximity of those adjacent streets do create spatial constraints, uh, and for, for the placement of streetscape and other, um, other security elements, uh, and other features. Um, and so this, this does require careful consideration of, of those impacts to pedestrian access, views of the historic buildings, as well as just the general openness of the campus. We also know because of these, these tight conditions and close proximities that, uh, we do recommend that the applicant continue to coordinate with the National Park Service, particularly, uh, Jefferson Drive, as well as the District Department of Transportation, uh, for Independence Avenue. Next slide. So regarding perimeter security, uh, we do think additional information will be So regarding perimeter security, we do think additional information will be necessary to evaluate the proposal, including a better understanding of the needs as well as the the current design approach. Therefore, we do request as part of this, the next submission that the app can provide an assessment for staff of the threats or risks to be addressed so that we can better understand what the needs are and help provide guidance in terms of what the design result could be. We'd also request a plan and additional information regarding the perimeter security approach along the length of Independence Avenue, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in the last two or three slides. We'd like to see a more comprehensive understanding of what the perimeter security needs will be along Independence Avenue from essentially stretching from the Freer Gallery all the way to to the Arts and Industries Building, because this exists as a single block. And then finally, we'd like to see some views and renderings for the proposed perimeter security, particularly in front of the castle as well as AIB, just to understand those visual impacts for particularly for the NHLs. Next slide. So as I wrap up, I'd like to point out here, you can see an elevation view as well as a plane view that Independence Avenue is particularly challenging in front of AIB because it is relatively close to the curb. As I mentioned before, this is a somewhat of a pinch point that will require additional study. Excellent. The applicant proposes to add ramps in this location to meet accessibility requirements, and we understand the intent of that. There is a grade change here. However, this will constrict the sidewalk zone significantly. It takes up about half of that. Again, we understand the building is close here, but it will have implications for the pedestrian experience. Excellent. And these these access needs also with the proposed perimeter security, you know, add further constraints and complications to the space. And so again, it would be helpful to understand from a more comprehensive perspective, what's going to be happening along this entire stretch of the street. And you can see here, you know, what's happening in front of the Freer today, as well as the views in front of the quadrangle. So we do request a more comprehensive look at this area to really understand what's what what the proposal is and how it might coordinate. Excellent. And I I'll also conclude by noting that NCPC has identified Independence Avenue as an important corridor and gateway. We would also be working with the District Department of Transportation and other stakeholders. When there's funding available to undertake a study of this area, a transportation study to improve mobility, curbside use, streetscape, pedestrian use, as well as connectivity. The streetscape and perimeter security for this particular aspect of the rock may need to respond to recommendations in that study or at the very least consider the larger context of the avenue if the study is not complete before the project is implemented. So and again, this is again, is looking at that more comprehensive look along the street. Next slide. So with that, I've covered all the recommendations in my presentation. I will conclude by saying I'm I'm available to answer any questions. We have Ann Trowbridge with the Smithsonian Institution here to provide some brief remarks, as well as I I know they have the entire design team here as well. So with that, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and I'll turn it over to Ms. Trowbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss. And good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. We are very pleased to be here today for this milestone in implementing our plan for the South Mall Campus, expanding public space and revitalizing the castle and the Arts and Industries Building and constructing a central utility plant, which will eventually serve all of the buildings of the campus. We have reviewed the NCPC staff report and its requests and recommendations for our next steps, and we'll be implementing those in consultation with Commission staff and in our Section 106 consulting parties meetings. There are a few areas that present challenges such as increasing the scope of the project by designing the perimeter security for additional buildings outside the project area. However, we assure you that we share your goal of a coordinated approach when those are designed. We are especially excited about the potential for more comprehensive future changes to the Independence Avenue streetscape that might result from the project that we have begun work on with your staff and will contribute to funding. Our museums would all benefit from additional space in the sidewalk and drop off zone that might be gained if there's a reduction in the vehicle travelings along Independence, which needs to be tested under normal traffic conditions. Thank you to the Commission staff for your excellent review of the Rock project. We hope that we can create opportunities in the future to bring the Commission on site prior to our preliminary review or to help you see the buildings in sight individually if you would like. We look forward to moving towards preliminary design in the in the next year. I would now like to introduce our acting undersecretary for administration, Douglas Hall, who will speak to you about the significance of the project for Smithsonian and its visitors. Doug?
Thank you, Anne. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. The revitalization of the Smithsonian's historic core, along with the creation of two new museums, is a priority undertaking for the Smithsonian over the next decade. As acting undersecretary for administration, I and the entire leadership team are working with Secretary Bunch to help steer these projects, which promise to not only preserve and transform our architectural legacy, but also help us achieve our mission to increase and diffuse knowledge for all Americans. The secretary and I share our team's excitement with the concepts being presented this afternoon. As the Smithsonian prepares to mark its 175th anniversary over the next year, we've come to appreciate the central role the castle and the Arts and Industries Building have played in the development of the Smithsonian, as well as the promise their revitalization creates for the future. One of the major goals of this project is to return these buildings to public use as much as possible. We prioritize creating exhibition and convening spaces over offices and building support areas. You've received a glimpse this afternoon of how we're balancing the building's rich 19th century architectural history with 21st century digital technologies. The revitalization of the castle and arts and industries will take them from being just recognizable symbols of the Smithsonian to vibrant, relevant and integral pieces of a visitor's overall Smithsonian experience. All of my former roles within the Smithsonian have impressed upon me the power of architecture and the symbols and the role they play in being part of the stories our visitors come to experience at our buildings. With that in mind, we intend for the revitalization of the historic core to honor the Smithsonian's past, advance our mission in new ways and look to the future by including infrastructure and support spaces for the entire South Mall campus that promote a more sustainable future. On behalf of the Smithsonian, we'd like to thank the Commission for providing us the opportunity to bring this concept design to you and look forward to your input and advice going forward. Like to turn it back to Anne now. If you have any questions, I'll probably pitifully help, but the team is here to provide more assistance. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fliss, Ms. Trowbridge, Mr. Hall. Welcome. You really have a big job on your hands. This is a tricky one. It's such a treasured site and exciting to think about a 175th birthday. But this is, this is really quite, quite inspiring and difficult. I'd love now to open it up to the Commission for any questions of the team here and then begin discussion. So any questions? Commissioner May.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the approach for earthquake proofing the building, the the castle. And, you know, I'm familiar with base isolation and certainly I remember all the previous discussions. Well, I don't remember all the previous discussions, but I remember discussing it before. And I've certainly been reading about this for, I don't know, 30 years, probably. How to do base isolation. I guess my question is, what does this? I mean, assuming that this is really the the only solution or the best solution for the castle. Is that, what does that mean for anything else? Because we're not seeing, you know, other agencies bring base isolation projects. Of course, not everybody has buildings like you do. But I mean, what about the other buildings that you have? I mean, are there going to be reasons to be considering this on any other buildings? Or are they just more modern and have more steel and are therefore not in as much risk? I mean, what's the, what's the, what's the bigger strategy?
That the short answer is the castle is quite unique in in its need for this. I'd like to call on Kirk Medham, our structural engineer from Silman, to talk to you about why this is the best preservation solution.
Great. Mr. Medham, you get all the fun projects, don't you?
Kirk, are you there?
Also, I was going to ask the same question. This is Commissioner Wright. I so and and just to expand on Mr. May's question, because we heard about base isolation in the South Mall Campus Plan. But my question was going to be, did you go further with your examination of different seismic upgrade techniques than you did on the for the South Mall Campus Plan? Because that's my, I'm I'm still stuck on it, too.
Kirk. You're muted, perhaps? Kirk, you're muted or your microphone is not on?
I saw him there for a second and then it went away.
It's showing you not muted, but we're not hearing you, Kirk. Not hearing you.
It's a great irony. It's a great irony when the engineers have technological problems.
Yeah. Matt Chalafu, could you speak to Kirk at for Kirk until he gets connected properly?
Sure, Anne. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so so the lowly architect can figure out how to work the technology. I I will do my best to to step in for Kirk. So I'll, a couple of different questions have been asked. One is, you know, why the castle and not other buildings? And I think that's a relatively straightforward answer is the castle is built of unreinforced masonry construction and the the kind of aspect ratio of a building tall and thin with all the towers is diametrically opposed to being able to work within a seismic event. And that was shown by the damage to the building that occurred in the relatively mild seismic event that we had a few years ago. And so the upgrades are abode requirement and they are to preserve the building and to safeguard people. And you look at the difference in kind of profile of the castle to the Arts and Industries Building, you can see why we don't have the issue with the Arts and Industries Building. It's water. It doesn't have that same kind of verticality to it. And so it's really, that's really being driven by geometry. I will say that we we are moving forward with the deep analysis. And Kirk, I think you might be able to touch on that more than I would be able to. You're muted again.
Yeah, can can you hear me?
Yes, Kirk.
Yes, wonderful. I keep getting a message that somebody muted me. So somebody doesn't, somebody's not interested in hearing it.
It's not me, Kirk. I want, I want you talking about.
Okay.
And if I could ask just briefly, Matt, if you could mute, there's a hum coming in on your line.
So let me try and do my best to be brief. The first question is why base isolation? And was it the only solution considered? Of course, we started by considering conventional solutions. And as was discussed in the presentation, the conventional solutions really have an impact both on cost and risk and historic preservation impact to the existing building. We would be modifying a lot of the above grade features. And and, you know, in doing so, you're modifying your your modifying historic fabric, which does represent risk. So we did investigate a base isolation solution. And we found it to be both cost effective and and from a performance perspective, superior to conventional solutions. I, in terms of the question of why, why the castle and not these other structures, there's a fundamental difference in the behavior of the castle relative to the other buildings on the the National Mall Campus. And that is that it has a number of vertical spires. Each of these vertical spires is acting as an independent cantilever. And in seismic performance, those cantilevers are trying to move at different natural frequencies and causing distress at the level of these roofs and 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 floor systems. And all of those are archaic construction. They're very brittle. They don't have the resiliency that the other buildings have because of the period of construction. The walls themselves are consistent, you know, we call them three leaf walls. They're actually a a a stone masonry exterior, a brick interior, but then they have rubble stone interior. So they don't have the kind of resiliency and redundancy that other systems have. So that starts to address why the castle. We did look at multiple systems. We found there was a a sort of a synergy, if you will, because the castle itself, in order to occupy and make use of the lower level, you had to lower the basements anyway to get the mechanical systems in. Once you've lowered, once you're lowering the foundations, that's a significant portion of the cost of a of a base isolation system. So you've already, you're already halfway there. So the economy kind of benefits from that synergy. Did that start to answer your question?
My answer, my question is answered, I think. The, as I recall, also there there, you know, a lot of this goes back to the that that earthquake from whatever it was, 2011. And it was a I remember hearing at some point that if the if the direction of the waves had come from, well, had if the wave had come from a different direction, that some of the spires might have actually fallen. It was only because it was coming largely from the west that there was not much more severe damage. Is did I remember that correctly?
Well, there there are a lot of sort of oversimplifications of seismic events. And and I wouldn't say that's, I wouldn't say that that's not true, but every seismic event has a has sort of a fingerprint. And that is a a natural frequency signature. And that that earthquake did have some components of natural frequency that might have done more damage if it had come from a different direction.
Yeah.
I think that's fair to say. But we also learned, you know, some people look at the the mineral earthquake and say, well, we saw the worst case scenario already. Why are we, why are we looking at seismic? That's not the case here. Again, that signature footprint was bad for some frequencies of structures, but not for all of the spires in the castle. So we know that the predicted earthquake hasn't actually happened yet. And so, you know, again, I don't want to go take everybody's time on this too much. But we did find that there's a great benefit to seismic base isolation. It is a technology that's proven very effective for historic buildings across the world. It just hasn't done been done much on the East Coast. It provides a level of performance for this building that actually saves the building. Most building.
I I think my my questions are well answered. Commissioner Wright, how about yours?
Yes, I got it.
Okay.
But can I, can I add, ask just, there was a small earthquake last week centered in Woodlawn that was a 2.6. Does that even, is that more frequent than we know? Earthquake at that level? I mean, this happened to be in the news, but but how often are, is there seismic activity that's of some concern?
That's a hard one. So the U.S. Geological Survey, you know, we have probably too much information at this point. The U.S. Geological Survey reports events on a very regular basis on their website. But a 2.6 does not even register in terms of a structural concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from our commissioners? Well, thank you for that thorough answer.
I appreciate your patience.
No, not at all. Technology is a challenging thing for us all, even engineers. And I'd love to open it up now for discussion, starting with Commissioner Argo, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on for the demonstration. And now Commissioner Argo.
I don't have, I appreciate the the.
I don't have, I appreciate the the thorough presentation. I'm sure I will have some questions and comments as we proceed. But I don't, I had one, but I don't think, I'll leave it for now. Appreciate the work that's going into it. It's it's not just exciting, it's interesting. It's really interesting how how this particular billing has to be managed.
Well put. Commissioner Wright?
I don't have anything further at all. I mean, I've I've looked at this thoroughly, and I'm I'm okay to go to the next next step.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Congratulations on the work thus far. So thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Cash is not with us. Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Ginsburg?
I I agree that this was a really interesting and engaging presentation. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood?
No, no questions or comments, other than to say, you know, I know you all have been consulting with our ship out and will be continuing to do something with the 106 process. And I think that has been successful so far. So thank you for that.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, not a whole lot of comments. Big project interest. I appreciate the review by the staff and saw these they raised. I think one of the areas I'm interested in seeing for the next stage is their implementation of some of the force protection measures they were talking about and what that will look like and how that will affect the the whole mall. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May, any further comments?
Yeah, I would I would just note a couple of things. The first of all, I appreciate the the way this project has evolved from what was originally discussed in the South Campus Plan. And then we're heading in a much more sensible direction. I would note that this is really going to be an extraordinary construction effort because of building, you know, large, deep spaces next to historic buildings. This is something I have experience with, having worked at the Capitol for the Visitor Center Project. And it is, it's just an extraordinary undertaking and has to be done with the utmost care. I'm, I feel confident that the appropriate care is being given to it. But it is, you know, you just have to be thinking about everything all the time and having multiple people thinking about everything and questioning things. Because there were, you know, there were moments on the Visitor Center Project where, you know, we almost made some significant errors that that could have had very bad outcomes. So it just, you just have to have very smart people thinking about it all the time and questioning the assumptions before you just set forth and try to get them done. So anyway, I look forward to further development. And I understand you are coordinating with our staff, the National Mall, about the the underground systems and how that will work. So hopefully, all that will be done in in close cooperation. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. May. Very thoughtful observation there, the complexity and the care that needs to be taken. And thank you again for the presentation. And at this point, is there a motion to approve the comments on the concept plans?
So moved?
By Commissioner Wright? I I believe that was a second by Commissioner Dixon. Ms. Koster, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Wright, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. With that, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
I believe Commissioner Cash is not with us. Commissioner Chang? May have stepped away. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us. That covers our action items. And now we have two information presentations. Agenda item 7A is an information presentation on the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility. That's a mouthful. Mr. Hart?
And I hope that you all can hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
I sometimes have some problems with the with the audio, so I'm glad that's working. So good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Representatives from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Engraving and Printing are here to provide an update on their work at the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility. They were last before the Commission in April 2021 for concept design review. At that time, the Commission identified some issues and concerns and requested an update before the project was submitted for preliminary review this fall. So as a reminder, information presentations are before the Commission for one of three reasons, which are which are shown here. In this case, the project review has already begun, and the Commission has requested an update information from the applicant. And I'll remind you that the Commission action, the Commission will not take an action on the project today. The information the Commission requested was for an update for the with the the TMP and concerning structured parking versus surface parking. At the concept review in April, the Commission stated the project was not meeting the one to two part, one to two comprehensive part plan parking ratio and was not meeting the structured parking policy. Today, we have several representatives from the Bureau of Engraving and Printing from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and their consultant, who will be presenting an updated analysis. We have Charles or Chuck Davis, who is with BEP, who is who will be first. Then that will lead to Matt Brettenother, who is with the Army Corps of Engineers. And finally, we'll have Joe Rocco, who is with Skidmore, Owens &amp; Merrill, who will be presenting the the analysis for today. And with that, I'll hand it off to Chuck Davis, who is with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing. And I don't think we can hear you right now. You may need to unmute. Not yet.
If your phone is still muted, you may want to unmute the phone as well.
Yes, don't we all love love technology?
Yeah. May I suggest that?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Carlton. Good afternoon, members of the Commission, Commission and staff. As you may recall, we have provided the Commission with information on the proposed currency production facility located at the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center on two previous occasions. I want you to know that we have heard the Commission's concerns regarding parking and transportation issues and have been working with the staff to provide an update to you on where we are to date with providing a response to these issues. We do recognize the transportation information we are providing today doesn't yet provide a full response to your concerns as we're just now initiating our transportation management plan with through through the Army Corps of Engineers. This process will better inform the Bureau on what initiatives can implement to assist in reducing our number of single occupancy vehicle trips and and as well as parking spaces on the site. We do believe today's update will provide you with a better understanding of how the Bureau operates, as well as our limitations with the actual site itself. Additionally, we will be providing you with some information that you requested pertaining to the environmental impacts associated with the different parking solutions that we have evaluated to date during the design process. With that, I'd like to start with providing a few updates pertaining to our anticipated public tour feature that you all requested during our last presentation. Next slide, please. Go ahead and next, please. So part of the Bureau's mission is to educate the public on the overt security features associated with Federal Reserve notes. In order to do that, we want to include a public tour program as part of this new facility. The Bureau anticipates approximately 45,000 visitors per year, as opposed to our current 200,000 visitors that we currently have in our facility on an annual basis downtown. The reason, the reason for the decrease is just because of location. We benefit from being downtown and having a lot more traffic and being close to the mall. So most of these visitors were anticipating are going to be associated with schools and or, you know, for, you know, professional tour, tour companies. We will accept, you know, we will allow for individual families, individuals to make make reservations and to come out and see this facility. We expect the tours to begin approximately 2029 as our downtown operations come to a come to a halt. We are not going to continue producing currency downtown at all. So having a tour downtown, seeing operational production equipment will no longer occur. We are still studying whether we're going to have a an interpretive type of tour in our current main building. That will, it would be some type of new tour that talks about the history and history of the Bureau, history of the U.S. Currency Program. We estimate approximately 30 persons per hour, six hours a day, five days a week, 50 weeks a year. We do shut down for our annual shutdown during the Christmas holiday. And so that's when we do preventative maintenance and whatnot. But the estimated, the estimated 30 can, you know, obviously, it'll flex a little bit here and there, depending on the group coming through. But that's just where we've started at. And it's based on a, you know, an approximate classroom size. The tours will be free, but they will be, will require advanced coordination. The tour itself, tourists will park outside of our secure boundary and enter into the public poor screening, security screening facility upon which we will shuttle them, shuttle them up to the public tour entrance. We have included in our total parking count approximately 30 spaces, which can incorporate either single occupancy vehicles or tour buses, school buses, and that is outside of the security screening facility. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Brettenother with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss where where we stand with the transportation management plan. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can I do a mic check? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Commission members, for allowing me the opportunity to brief this material to you today. This slide is meant to show the various BEP staff shift times and how they overlap with one another. In the visual aid, you can see the various staff categories. Admin staff, which typically work between 6:30 a.m. and 4 p.m. Production staff workers, which include evening, midnight, and daytime shift work. You will notice that there are two peaks on this graphic that indicate the two peak times in which the most amount of BEP staff are present for their workday. One peak is at 6:30 a.m., and one is at 2 p.m. Another point that I would like to make here is that the shift workers have a 60-minute overlap each day to go through security, change into uniform, and go over printing press operations with the previous or incoming shift. Next slide, please. In this graphic, you can see the DC Metro operation time and LaFonte stop time for arrival and departure to and from the existing DC facility. At a 5:20 a.m. arrival, there is ample time for daytime shift workers to arrive at LaFonte stop, walk for about 10 minutes, and enter the DC facility to begin their shift on time. With the last departure at 11:14 p.m., there is plenty of opportunity for other production workers to utilize metro services. Next slide, please. Here you can see on the left side, the existing DC facility transportation split, and on the right, the proposed split at the Beltsville facility. The proposed condition data for the Beltsville facility was collected as part of the Transportation Impact Study, completed in June of 2020. And the existing condition data was recently collected through a survey to identify how employees currently arrive to the existing DC facility. As you can see in the blue color, there is a projected increase from 30% to 57% of estimated staff relying on single occupancy vehicles as workers transition to the new Beltsville facility. Next slide, please. In a similar graphic, this shows the metro operating times for the Greenbelt Metro Stop in relation to the proposed Beltsville facility. The first train arrives at 5:51 a.m. in Greenbelt, which is only nine minutes prior to the start of the daytime shift. And there is an approximate 12-minute drive to get to the proposed Beltsville facility. This puts the daytime production worker at the Beltsville facility after the start of their shift. In other words, BEP daytime shift workers cannot rely on metro operations to get to the Beltsville facility, excuse me, to get to the Beltsville facility. I would also like to remind the Commission that the production workers' shift times have been negotiated under collective bargaining agreements with their union, making shift times extremely difficult to adjust. Next slide, please. In total, we have requested 1,234 parking spaces for the proposed BEP facility in Beltsville. To get to this number, we are requesting a one-to-one parking ratio for production staff due to the lack of other transit options currently available in the area. You may also notice that we have requested a one-to-two parking ratio for admin staff as their hours are more flexible. In addition to the 1,179 employee spaces, we are estimating 25 official visitor spaces and 30 spaces for tourists, as Chuck had mentioned. Next slide, please. We are currently working on the development of a transportation management plan that will help identify strategies to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles traveling to and from the Beltsville facility in the future. Potential strategies may include increased carpooling and ride-sharing programs, as well as short and long-distance shuttle options. We are expecting to share the transportation management plan with the Commission this fall for review. Next slide, please. I'd now like to pass the presentation over to Joe Rocco, our consultant, to brief you on the carbon analysis behind the parking design. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Hopefully, you can all hear me. Is that a positive? Great. Thank you. Okay. Great. Chairperson Wright and Commission members, good to good to see you all again. You know, it was interesting, over the past three hours, we heard a lot about sustainability, carbon emissions, and reduced carbon footprint. So I think this is a timely discussion. Back in 2018, SOM embraced a commitment firm-wide in all of our projects to reduce the carbon footprint through thoughtful, methodical design ideation in the way we approach our work. And I think this is a good example of of that. So next slide, please. Just for a reminder, this is the the aerial view. You know, this is Just for a reminder, this is the, the aerial view, you know, this is dating back to nineteen-ten when the government purchased this property. It was farmland. It still is farmland, and that's the context in which we're operating. Next slide, please. And I think, you know, we're, we're focused on the, the number of parking stalls today, but I think it's important to understand the overall sustainable context of this development. One, it is on a hundred-and-four-acre campus. It's a twenty-acre building footprint. It has twelve acres of, of absorptive green roof, which is reducing the heat island effect in managing water retention as required by MDE. It also has one hundred and one percent of all power coming from eight acres of photovoltaics. So, on the building performance side, it's a highly performative complex. On the site side, there are twelve-hundred-and-fifty trees that are being planted at full maturity. We're looking at fifty-nine acres of newly added tree canopy. Also, twenty-nine acres of newly added native grasses. And also, three hundred and sixty replacement trees, of which there are one hundred and eleven specimen trees. And as required by NCPC, they will all be two-and-a-half-inch calipers. So we're following those guidelines. We should state that, for context, we had studied structured parking. And for a number of reasons, it was eventually dismissed for primarily view shed issues, as stated in the EIS. The building itself is not visible from the public streets. The structured parking forces one to be elevated above grade, blocking views out into the pastoral landscape. Very costly. One is looking at an underground parking structure of approaching one hundred million dollars for this number of vehicles. Open structured tier parking would be approximately forty million dollars versus surface parking, which is approximately twelve million dollars. So, that cannot be discounted. But what's interesting is, in studying this over the past year, you know, we originally stated to staff that surface parking was discounted. We're not even going to study it. And what's interesting is, over the past year, we actually have analyzed this in great detail. And believe this is the most appropriate design solution for this site for several reasons, as I stated. Also, in terms of land preservation, any potential expansion of the building would happen out to the west. And there is no need for preservation of, of this adjacent land to the east or to the south for any other use. This will always be BEP's use for their mission-critical facility. The other thing I will point out is the, the integration of the natural landscape weaving throughout the, the parking area. Which provides a very shaded, protected, water-management-sensitive solution that is very unique for surface parking. This is not a military installation. A tremendous amount of canopy has been integrated into the overall site. So with that, let's go to the next slide. And here's a view, looking at the east green parking area. Again, we have these very wide expansive bioswales, which are planted with up to four-and-a-half-inch caliper trees. And paved areas providing a sense of shading and natural well-being for staff coming and going to the facility. Next slide, over to the south parking area, similarly with a view off to the left of the building entrance. Again, very wide expansive bioswales, naturally planted with replacement specimen trees, new trees, as well as native grasses. Okay, next slide. And here's the infrastructure. This is how it all works, and this is mandated by, by MDE in terms of stormwater management. So this is a section through a very wide bioswale with the permeable pavers beneath the parking stalls on the left, as well as to the right. Light in color, not black, to reduce heat island effect. And the only paved area which is asphalt would be the driving lanes in between the parking stalls. And then, of course, the infrastructure for the collection of the water, filtration of it, and returning back into the natural environment is below the, is below the grade. Next slide. So with that, again, as part of our initiative to reduce the carbon footprint on every project that we work on throughout the world. We've brought that, that philosophy to bear on BEP. And I should state that the overall complex will reduce BEP's carbon footprint by fifty percent compared to what they're doing right now at DCF. That's on the overall building and site campus. So today, we're going to focus on parking. A lot of discussion about structured parking versus surface parking. There are three components that we evaluate on all of our projects, and you've read a lot about this. I'm going to try to break this down so it's comprehensible to all of us who drive cars. There are three components that make up carbon. It's the embodied carbon, which is the greenhouse gas emissions released through the supply chain from cradle to site. That means CO2 emitted in the production of concrete, steel rebar, MEP, elevator, fire protection systems, lighting. As well as CO2, carbon dioxide, emitted to transport those materials to the site, whether they're coming from California or Prince George's County. The second component is operational. This is, this is quite significant. The CO2 contributed during the in-use operation of the building, once it's occupied, every single year. And that's to operate, again, these MEP systems, elevators, lighting of the parking structure. Okay? And then, the final component is the sequestered side of, of it. And, you know, this is interesting. Trees essentially are sponges. They extract carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. And they provide so much sense of well-being and shade, absorbing water during rain, so, so tremendous qualities about them. So with those three components, let's look at three solutions that, that we evaluated from a carbon footprint analysis. One was a fully underground complex planted over with, with green shrubs and trees. Versus a structured tier parking compared to the surface parking, which, as designed by us for this particular solution. So this is in pounds of carbon dioxide. The underground facility would, the materials would, would require over nine million pounds of carbon dioxide. The structured parking would be thirteen million pounds, and surface parking is only one-point-four million pounds. We're gonna, we're gonna calibrate what that means in, in a little bit. Let's go to the next slide. That's the embodied. That's to build the, the parking structure. And you can see those gray bars rise to the top and are superseded by the orange bar below, which is the operational carbon. And you can see the jump in, in emissions of, of carbon dioxide is really quite significant. Five-fold increase for the underground parking. That's over forty-eight million pounds per year of carbon dioxide to operate an underground facility for eleven-hundred-and-seventy-nine vehicles. Why is that? Well, it's fully enclosed. You've got a smoke evacuation system, MEP distribution systems, elevators, lighting. It's fully enclosed and dark, so a lot of robust systems go into that, that structure. On the structured solution, it's a little bit less, twenty-eight-point-five million pounds of carbon dioxide because it's somewhat open. It still, still has elevators. It still has sprinklers. It still has lighting that's operating from time to time. And then we go to surface parking, and you can see on the operational side, it's only six million pounds of carbon dioxide. Why is that? Well, the only thing we really have are lights, and they're on during the evening. Also included in this is the maintenance of the permeable pavers, so they're vacuumed on an annual basis so that the filtration system is continuously working. So, a significant difference there. Now let's go to the next slide. Okay, let's look at the trees on this particular site and what they're doing for us. And you can see the damage has been done by the construction and the annual operation of these facilities. And if you look at those green bubbles, they're relatively small in the scale of this parking structure. So that is, in an underground solution, fully paved and planted with natural grasses and trees. We're only extracting fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-one pounds out of the atmosphere per year. On the structured parking, there, we have exposed concrete paving for the parking deck with minimal planting for that particular solution. So the extraction of carbon dioxide out of the air is significantly less, only three-point, thirty-eight-hundred pounds. And if you go to the surface at the end, it's almost comparable to underground because of the, the weaving in and out of the bioswales, the grasses. And the, the dozens of acres of tree canopy that we're adding to the surface parking. So, let's go to the next slide. And what does all this mean? Okay. Here it is, telling everything up. You've got over fifty-seven million pounds of carbon dioxide for underground versus forty-one million structured, and only seven-point-five million for the surface. So let's, let's talk about this and think about this in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and what it's doing to our environment from a vehicular perspective. So we're going to relate this back to cars. Let's go to the next slide. Here it is. So, and all of this is scientific data. It's all published. There's no, there's no fudging here. According to EPA, your typical car contributes eight-point-four metric tons of carbon dioxide per year, based upon thirty-eight miles per gallon fuel efficiency. I drive a Honda Accord. I get about forty-one to forty-two miles a gallon, so this makes sense to me. So, this is just the operation of the parking structure. The damage has already been done with the embodied carbon. We've already, we've already expended that. But on the operational side, every single year, that underground facility is emitting over forty-eight million pounds of carbon dioxide. Which is equivalent to putting two-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-five cars on the road every year. Structured parking, a little bit better. Twenty-eight-point-five million on the operational. It's over fifteen-hundred cars. And then we go to surface parking, and you can see a significant difference, which equates to three-hundred-and-twenty-seven cars on the road every year. Eighty-seven percent reduction in the, in the carbon footprint. So, this is, this is a very interesting lens. I think it's very relevant in society today, and, you know, every country is dealing with this. We're all seeing the ramifications of it. So, from a design perspective, we really want to make smart, efficient, clever design decisions. And in the context of this particular site, given the fact that it is a farmland. And the initiative has always been, as driven by the EIS, to, to mitigate view sheds. Is to integrate this development into the natural pastoral landscape. And, and we believe surface parking is the right approach for this project and this particular site. And with that, I'd open it up to any comments, thoughts, observations, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. And with that, Madam Vice Chair, I'll hand it, hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, Mr. Roko, Mr. Brittenhour, Mr. Davis. I would, I would like to ask the Commission if there are any questions of our presenters.
I, Chairperson, might I have a question?
Please, Commissioner Trueblood.
I guess, my, my big question is on slide twenty-three that we just saw. I was, maybe I'm a little dense or tired or something. You're not talking about the greenhouse gas emissions from all of the single occupancy vehicles usage that will be induced from this new plant that's out in the middle of, not near anything, right? You're, you're just sort of converting what you think are the savings into car usage. You're not talking about the additional greenhouse gases that are going to be induced by, well, on that chart doubling, but it seems like, given parking, maybe quadrupling the amount of, of, of driving.
Yeah, we're just, Commissioner, we're just equating the operational side associated with that facility by itself.
Right. Yeah, it'd be interesting to compare, you know, all of this good stuff that's happening, and then how much additional carbon we're producing from all of the single occupancy vehicle trips that we will be creating. But, you know, that, that maybe will be an interesting thing we can do as we look at the, at the transportation management plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Any other commissioners have questions for our presenters? I, I can, I completely agree with Commissioner Trueblood's question and direction there, that it'll be interesting to see as you analyze this, because you're bringing all these cars to the site. But it is interesting to think about, and, and it almost seems counterintuitive that we couldn't do something smaller. And I'm wondering with parking, and I'm wondering if the, if the demand lessens either through shift changes or better access to transportation or carpooling. Would there be plans to remove even surface parking, if that's what's ultimately decided to go there? I suppose that's a question for you, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, we, we believe that what we presented today is a worst-case analysis, and we are absolutely looking at getting into the transportation management plan and seeing what makes sense. You know, that, that, what we presented today is based on our planning factors at the current moment. We totally anticipate the transportation management plan assisting us in making the best decisions possible to comply with. You know, to, to our best of our ability, you know, NCPC guidelines. But, you know, right now, we don't have, we, we have what we have right now, and, you know, we're looking forward to jumping into that with the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, here in the next several weeks and reporting back to you all. But just know that, you know, it's our commitment to do what's best, but we also have a mission that is very unique to the federal government. So I would just, thank you.
No, I appreciate that, and I, I have a follow-up question. I recall we talked about the shift work, and you showed us the peak times. Has, has there been any more discussion about changing shifts to lessen the impact, or is that possible?
I, I think that's part of another, another discussion that we will have during the transportation management plan. Just know that we, we, we are not a, a, a one-shop agency. We have over fifteen labor unions that all, you know. It, this is a work, workplace condition that would have to be negotiated, and to get fifteen labor unions all on the same page is, is not easy. But, you know, our management will look at that, and, you know, we will evaluate that as well as we enter into the, the study.
Well, yeah, I appreciate the, the difference in the leadership and points of view. It might be an interesting discussion, though, in terms of everyone working together to achieve that bigger goal and knowing that we're, we're dealing with climate change. And who knows, you know, given, given the disruption of working remotely, people's work habits have changed quite a bit. So, you know, who knows? You, you obviously have to have people on-site. But maybe, maybe there is more flexibility these days to have those kind of discussions. So I, I appreciate the challenges, but I'd still love to hear more if you can push the envelope there a little bit. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Any other questions from the commissioners? If, if not, I'd love to open it up to the Commission for discussion and comments. I'll start with Commissioner Trueblood to see if Commissioner Trueblood has a word to say, and then go in a round-robin format. So everyone, please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner Trueblood.
Okay, thank you. I guess, you know.
Okay, thank you. I guess, you know, just to follow up. Yeah, I was looking at, you know, that, that chart showing the existing mode share and the future mode share was helpful a little. I guess, as you could hear from me, a little disconcerting, but I understand, you know, it is what it is. But I, you know, to me, it seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect between the, that chart that showed, I think, 71% either single occupancy vehicle or carpool, and then the much higher rate of parking that you'll be providing. So to me, you seem to be saying, well, 71% of our employees can, can, you, you, only 71% will be taking a vehicle. Some of them, of that will be carpooling, but then we're going to be providing parking at a much higher rate, one-to-one for, for some of the folks. So I just think, as you delve, especially as you delve into the Transportation Management Plan, really reconciling those numbers. I think to your point, Mr. Davis, figuring out how you can, where there may be opportunities to trim, I think that's what we'll want to be, you know, really delving into as you further, you know, as you further refine this and as we, as it comes back to us. So I look forward to that, and I appreciate the update on this information.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just, just so you, I know, I know it was mentioned by Matt, but we have that one-hour overlap between shifts. That's why, that's why, you know, you have people coming in, they're staying for an hour before the next shift, before the shift that was on, on 2D actually departs. And so that's what's pushing that higher number that kind of makes it look deceiving, but we absolutely will work on that.
Yeah, I saw that. So you have your large, that 800 number and that 160 number, and so those two are combined. But what I'm saying is not all of, you're assuming every single one of those needs a vehicle. Your chart shows that at least some of them might be carpooling, and some of them, you know, that, some of them, depending on the timing and the shift, you know, it, it just seems like it might not be a one-to-one. And I think really figuring that out and delving into that would, might, might be able to carve out a little bit, you know, a little bit more, a little bit less parking, I guess I'd put it that way.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon. Let's see, I will move on to Commissioner Argo.
I don't have any addition. I'd like to associate my, my comments with, or associate with borrow from, jump on to the comments by Commissioner Trueblood, who I think, you know, clearly outlined the, you know, the issues we probably all, we all have that I think the applicant will, I, I trust and I anticipate that they will address regarding the use of single-use vehicles and parking.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon. I can hear you faintly. Nope, that's a little better.
I will get there eventually, and I'll figure this out for next month. But I just want to echo to Commissioner Trueblood's comments. I just had concerns about the analysis I saw on parking needs, you know, especially when I took a look at the existing parking lot, much less available than you would expect in DC as compared to the new site. And I think, Commissioner White, your comments regarding discussions and questions during the DMP on the willingness of workforce to shift hours, to take advantage of metro is something that has to happen. I will stop here to make life easier for everybody.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your tenacity. So I want to move on to Commissioner Wright.
Sorry, I'm slow too. I'm, I'm, I, I'm much more concerned with the design of the building. And it has more to do with the location, which of course, you know, the design team can't help. So I think I just won't say anything right now. It's just a lot. It's, and I, and I, and I get why more of it isn't underground, because it costs a lot. But I think it's already a really big building, and then you surround it by surface parking, and you have, you, how to get taken together. How many acres are we talking about? That's a rhetorical question. I don't need an answer right now, but I, I, I totally understand the constraints of the budget, but, but it just seems like this gargantuan thing is landing like a spaceship in the middle of these beautiful rolling hills. And I, I would, I just hope that, A, we don't make a decision to put a federal facility out in the middle of farmland ever again, and B, since we already have, that we mitigate all of those effects I just described. It just feels like it just kind of landed. I mean, if it was round and, and more like the Apple headquarters, the image would be complete. And, and I understand the design challenges. It's just the location. It's just, and I know that ship has sailed. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I'm, it's late and I'm tired, and I'm feeling like Peter May. I just want to beat this drum again. Because I, I, I just, I don't know why we do these things, especially when we know it takes cars to get there. And it does, and, and we can parse the information a million different ways to Sunday, but it doesn't change the fact that there's, public transportation is practically non-existent. It's a single occupancy car facility. And whether we build surface parking or a parking garage, I mean, I'm assuming, I mean, I heard the arguments. I'm not sure I'd buy it. And I, 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 I'm trying really hard to find some vein of generosity about this, but it's just the wrong place for this facility. And, and I know that's frustrating for the design team and the, and the, the, the BEP people to hear at this stage of the game when it's all pretty much done, but it's equally frustrating to be confronted with another one of these facilities when we, by this time, should know better. That's it.
I, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Wright, and I know the ship has sailed, but it is something we have to keep in front of us as we try to figure out how to avoid, avoid these situations, especially in a place that is farmland and used for agricultural research. That's a particular irony of the location. And again, we know it has to be frustrating for you all to hear this as well. With that, I'll go to Commissioner Dixon.
I think there are a lot of challenges. I'm just waiting for him to finish it and invite us out for some swag souvenirs. Thank you. Stay tuned.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I believe Commissioner Ginsburg had to leave. Five.
Okay. And well, given no other comments, I think I shared mine in, in response to others. But thank you all for hanging in there with us today and being near to the last on the agenda. We appreciate your response, and we'll continue the conversation as, as I know you work to try to mitigate these impacts. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, thank you.
So the next item is Agenda Item 7B, an information presentation on the Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling Master Plan Update. And we will hear from Mr. Wild.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. We'll try to be very quick with this. I know we've had a, a long meeting here today.
We don't want to give you short shrifts. We were paying attention.
Okay, can you see that on your screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. Before we wrap up here today, we have two planners here from Joint Base Anacostia-Bowling, who would like to walk the Commission around the installation through a brief virtual tour. And this is in advance of our scheduled upcoming review of the JBAB draft master plan in September. As part of their planned development process, JBAB and their consultant team have led a series of inter-agency planning workshops over the past year to study the development of a more defined central downtown area on base to look at how to improve traffic operations at the installation's main Arnold Gate, and to lay out plans to grow JBAB into a more sustainable and resilient operation. All of this work is founded on the plan's vision statement, which is to serve as an urban waterfront military community that enables readiness and resilience, and honors its heritage with an integrated and efficient development pattern organized around complete transportation and park networks. So with that, I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Jeff Appel, who is a senior planner with the JBAB Planning Consultant, the Schreifer Group, and Mr. Tom Minter, who is a community planner with the 11th Civil Engineer Squadron at JBAB. And also here today, we have Ms. Kat Keller-Cratzer, Deputy Base Civil Engineer, and Jill Schreifer, CEO of the Schreifer Group. And all of our guests are available for any questions from the Commission at the conclusion of our tour presentation. So with that, Mr. Appel, you may now begin your installation overview. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Thanks for having our team here and for sticking around for our virtual tour. I'd like to just briefly introduce the team that we have with us today. So my name is Jeff Appel, Senior Planner with the HBNA Schreifer Group Joint Venture. We're the consultants assisting JBAB with updating their overall master plan. We've got a couple of members of the JBAB planning team. So we've got Tom Minter, who's a community planner with the 11 CES. Tom, if you want to just say hi. If you're, if you're still on the line. I know we've had some, some difficulties. Well, Tom's a community planner with the 11 CES, and then we've got Kat Keller-Cratzer as well, who I believe is on the line.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you all for having us this afternoon. Looking forward to the presentation. Any questions the Commission may have?
And then finally, we've got Jill Schreifer.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, next slide, Mike.
Can you hear me, Jeff?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Tom, I'm here. I had to unmute myself. Yeah, this is Tom Minter, and hello to the Commission and everyone, community planner, JBAB.
All right, Tom, while we, while we've got you unmuted, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just giving a quick overview of JBAB, just for the Commission.
All right. So, for the Commission, this presentation is to summarize the Commission's joint base Anacostia installation prior to the Commission's review of the draft master plan in September. Basically, JBAB is located and definitely is located in DC. It serves around 290, 295, and it's sort of across the street from San Elizabeth West Campus. The installation established a joint base in 2010, merging naval support facilities and Bowlin Air Force Base. JBAB currently supports supports presidential ceremony on Homeland Security and Defense Support Authorities and the National Security Mission, conducted by five of the nation's armed forces and other federal agents. So the purpose of this is to bring forth the division, 2030, 2040 vision for JBAB as far as the development. The 2014 plan that was approved by the Commission was structured into a five-year development goal. This reaches ideally much longer range. So that being said, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Jeff.
All right. Thanks, Tom. So just a, a quick background. So we'll, we'll be coming in front of you guys in, in front of the Commission in September for the, the master plan update, which is going to have three components, actually. So the overall installation development plan, which is the overall master plan, we'll also have a district plan for the historic bowling town center district in the center of the base, and then also a transportation management plan. If you go to the next slide, we can start our tour. So here's an overall map of JBAB. North is to the right of this image. West is to the top of the page. So you'll see JBAB is located along the Potomac River, and actually the confluence of the Potomac and the Anacostia right across from DCA, and right next to the San Elizabeth DHS campus as well. The dash line on the graphic indicates the route that we'll be taking on our tour, and then the numbers indicate the photos. So if you go to the next slide, Mike. So we'll begin at the South Gate. This is one of three active gates to the installation. This one, you'll notice there's a tent and a truck there. This is where the current large vehicle or truck inspection station is located. There's a plan to eventually build a new large vehicle, vehicle inspection site at the North Gate, which is closer to where a lot of the industrial and logistics functions are, and to get some of that truck traffic away from the family housing, which is really located at the southern end of the base here. Next slide. Not far from the South Gate, there's a large undeveloped piece of land, one of the, one of the few greenfield sites on the, on the base. It's the site of a future charter school that will be serving both on-base and off-base kids that's currently under construction. It's going to be opening this fall in trailers as they finish construction of the final building. And there's some planning for some other youth and child-related services on this site as well. Next slide. There's a marina on base on the Potomac River, small recreational marina, and also a small restaurant near the marina as well. Next slide. This is Blanchard Barracks. It's one of the tallest, if not the tallest, building on base. It's an old barracks building that's in disrepair and scheduled for demolition. So the site of the building is where, as well as the surrounding parking and potentially some of the open space, is an area, one of the biggest areas that has potential for redevelopment within the town center area. So there are a number of options that we may be considering for this area that we can speak about when we, we come in front of you in, in September. Next slide. These are a couple of photos of some of the family housing on base. So there's a variety of housing types that exist on base from larger detached single-family homes or officer housing, as well as some denser town, townhome style developments. The next slide, please. There are a number of small pocket parks within the family housing areas that include a variety of amenities, as you can see here, from basketball courts to playgrounds and, and so forth. Next slide, please. There is a large, long waterfront park that extends a good portion of the riverfront length of JBAB. And it includes a lot of different amenities, so some basketball courts, pavilions, there's a dog park, benches, et cetera. Next slide. With the, the waterfront park is a waterfront trail, jogging and biking trail that extends almost the entire length of the waterfront at JBAB. It's a little bit more developed with amenities towards the, the southern end where, where it's about family housing, and then changes, the character of it changes a little bit as it goes north. Next slide. And then at the very north end of the base, along the waterfront, there is a seawall and levee. And this has been the focus of some study to ensure that JBAB is resilient, given climate change and sea level rise. Next slide. At the very, very north end of the installation is an area of land that that is, uh, in the process of being exchanged between the Navy and the National Park Service. Uh, the National Park Service will be building a, a small, uh, campus there, and you can see the, uh, Frederick Douglass, uh, bridge in the background there. Uh, next slide. This is a view of the first Sterling Gate, which is the north gate. Uh, this is, uh, close to a lot of the industrial, uh, type functions and logistics types functions. So this is going to be, uh, the, the future site of the commercial vehicle truck inspection site. Uh, next slide. Okay, moving more towards the center of, of the installation, uh, there are some historic buildings, uh, that are currently home to the Air Force Honor Guard, uh, and a green quad area where they, uh, where they practice. Um, there is some, some future planning to potentially consolidate the Navy Honor Guard, which currently, um, is located elsewhere on the base, uh, into this area and, and create a, uh, a campus there. Uh, next slide. This is a view of the Arnold Gate, which is the current main gate. Um, however, there's been some, some thought to, uh, as the north and south gates are, uh, improved, uh, to, uh, you know, grouping those to, for, for additional vehicle, uh, traffic and making, uh, more pedestrian bicycle and transit improvements to this gate, uh, as well as, um, trying to find some solutions to things like, uh, you know, Amazon and Uber and, and those sorts of, uh, you know, Grubhub, those sorts of things, especially with COVID, uh, we've learned of, of some challenges, unique challenges with those sorts of services on getting onto a, uh, military installation. So, uh, making some improvements to accommodate that. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is, uh, a plane on a stick and the ceremonial entrance that greets you as you go, you come through the, the Arnold Gate, some open space. Uh, next slide. Uh, so there are a variety of, uh, facility types throughout the base, um, and, and really a pretty broad range from industrial facilities to more mission-focused uses to administrative uses, community uses, et cetera. Uh, the image on the right is a historic hangar, uh, that has been converted to, uh, to be used by the Air Force Band. Uh, and then on the left is a picture of the, uh, uh, Bowling Officers Club. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a, a representative photo of some mature trees on base. There are actually, uh, quite a few, uh, very nice, mature, uh, trees along streets as well as in open spaces throughout the base. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, there is, uh, an, an existing, uh, CSX Railroad easement that's a, a rail line that's not, no longer in use. Uh, there's been some discussion in trying to acquire, uh, the easement and then using it as a rails-to-trail opportunity that would connect, um, north-south through the base as well as connecting, uh, externally as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, and finally, this is a, a, a view. This is our team. We were on-site a couple of weeks ago. Uh, this is, uh, McCord Street, which is one of the primary east-west, uh, streets through the town center, uh, district, um, that accesses a lot of community, uh, community support functions like a fitness center and, uh, uh, bowling alley and so forth. Uh, and this is, is going to be the target of some pedestrian improvements as well as street scape improvements to support, uh, uh, walkability. Um, next slide. Okay, so that, that concludes our tour. This is, uh, the map again, just kind of reorient you. Um, uh, if you want to go to the next slide, Mike, um, we can just, uh, kind of wrap up and just let you know our next steps are, we are, uh, in the process of preparing our, uh, preliminary submittal, uh, which will be coming, uh, to NCPC at the end of July, uh, to get into, uh, onto the September meeting. Uh, and then in the meantime, we'll be, uh, reviewing and refining, uh, our documents and, uh, providing a final submittal, uh, later in the year with the, the goal of finalizing our products in January of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so with that, that, that concludes our tour and, uh, just open it up for any, any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, um, Mr. Appel, Mr. Winter, and Ms. Keller-Cratzer, Ms. Schreifer, and Mr. Wile. Um, hope I didn't leave anyone out there, but, uh, I really appreciated that virtual tour and I'd love to open it up to the Commission if there are any questions. Hearing no questions, we'll open it up for discussion. Uh, I'll start with Commissioner McMahon. See if we can hear you this time. I'll
How about now?
There, there you go. Can hear you loud and clear.
This is so strange. No, I appreciate the, uh, presentation. Looking forward to see the return in September.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Argo.
Yes, there we go. Really appreciate the presentation. I had the, um, pleasure and the honor of being inducted at the base as an honorary commander back in May. And so I had a little tour, not, not a big one, but, um, was introduced to the base, um, uh, for the first time. And I'm, uh, just, I'm, I'm just delighted also to see what's happening there and that, um, I'll get to work, uh, with folks from the base and the Commission as well on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that, um, Commissioner Argo. Congratulations. It's quite an honor.
Thank you. And, you know, members of my family, uh, uh, called me Commander, which was really exciting for about, for about a day. Anyway, thank you.
Well, it, it's quite an honor. So we'll, we'll salute you next time we, we see you in person. Uh, Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I, I should know this better than I do. Um, this is one where I, I know that our ability to actually have a in-person tour is limited, but I would really suggest that we try, because I have a very vivid imagination and I'm having a hard time, um, getting my bearings on this base. It's such a, it's such an oddity, right? You, you see some of the pictures and you could be, um, you, it, it's hard to imagine that you're right oh, um, in the, still in the city in some places. I don't know. I, I, I hope that, that we can get there. Um, even if we can't do a field trip, if there's some other people who feel like I do on the Commission, maybe we could take a small group to, um, to have a walk around. And as I said, I should know this and having worked on the west campus of St. Elizabeth's for, I mean, not work at the campus, but on the campus. And you're in the backyard and we're always thinking about the views and all of that, but I've really, I don't know very much about the campus. And, um, I'd like to know a little bit more so we can give you a fair shake.
Ma'am, I, we would very much appreciate that. This is Kat. I'm the, I'm the deputy at the Civil Engineer Squadron. Um, we've very much recognized the, the Commission's, you know, responsiveness to COVID and we didn't want to impose on you, but if anyone is interested, um, earlier last year, I actually took the consultants around, um, and we did kind of a car tour. We were all in our own cars and got out at stops and looked at things. We'll be happy to do that, um, if, anytime if you, if any, you or any other Commission members would like to see the base.
That's a great offer. Thank you so much. Commissioner Dixon, this should be a project near and dear to your heart.
Uh, yes, it is. In fact, I have a lot, a deep history on that property. As a kid crashing the gate trying to get into the gym where I wasn't supposed to be, trying to find a basketball court that was indoor was quite an accomplishment, uh, and other things, swimming pools, et cetera. And then I got some credentials to be able to be there legitimately that I have been. I'm really looking forward to it. I used to keep my sailboat at your marina for a while and, uh, then that worked out nicely. Uh, and also other things, but I'm looking forward to it going forward. It's a great, it's a great space, you know, and it is, uh, nestled into a great community. Uh, we used it a great deal. It was something that was very much an amenity for the community until nine eleven, when things became tight. And, uh, therefore we couldn't do all that we used to, and you all wanted to because you were always good about that. So give up the good work and, and I'm happy to see the new commander. Uh, and we'll be talking about how we can, uh, help get, uh, the base more locked into the community as she moves forward. Commander.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Trueblood, would you like to wrap it up? Oh, did we lose Commissioner Trueblood? Well, sorry about that. Um, well, I guess I'll wrap it up. I, I just echo everyone's comments. Thank you so much. Um, that was really eye-opening just to take the virtual tour. And it is, it is, it, it appears to be very different places all wrapped into one and being on the waterfront and in that location. It really is, um, quite a unique spot. So I'll, I'll be very curious to watch how this unfolds and we really look forward to the future hospitality to take a look. Um, if there are no additional comments, I want to thank all of you. Um, this will conclude our open session agenda. The Commission will not have an August meeting, but we will meet next on Thursday, September first at one P.M. So if there is no other business to come before the Commission, the open session is now adjourned. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July weekend, um, and enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, you too.